All right. Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:58 PM. It is Tuesday, January the 3rd. I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order. Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
Heiser?
Here.
Flores Kail?
Here.
Zuniga?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I will close the citizen comments period. It's now closed. Were you wanting to come and speak? You come at seven?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Citizen comments period is now closed. Next up is executive session. Councilmember Heiser.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive sessions from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics: Pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071, 104 South Burleson; possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase of real property for public purpose; personnel matters. Okay. So just skip to four. Convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city. That would be Project Laser Lemon, Project Light Bright. Take action on items discussed in executive session. Project Laser Lemon.
This will be when we come back.
Okay. Scratch that.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn? All right, we adjourn. Now we're going to let the tape roll over, and we'll start our regular meeting. All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 7:06 PM. It is Tuesday, January the 3rd, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
Heiser?
Here.
Flores Kail?
Here.
Zuniga?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for city council special meeting on December the 20th and the regular meeting for the same day, 2022.
Motion by Mayor Protem Tobias, seconded by councilmember Parsley. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, that you direct those comments to the mayor and council, and that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have two registered to speak. First up is Beau Burkett. I think I said that right.
Hi, yeah. My name is Beau Burkett with Burkett Media. I just wanted to make myself available to you guys for... My item is actually an executive session for Project Light Bright. And if you have any questions during executive session, I just want to let you guys know that I'm available for quickening questioning and then also will be in the audience until the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right, next up, Shari Boyet.
Thank you, mayor and council members. My name is Shari Boyet. I'm the Hayes County Animal Advisor, and I'm here tonight in support of no-kill programs and best humane ethical practices in the management of community cats. It's essential for Kyle to support a TNR program as a preventative solution. It is the only known humane, effective, proven method to proactively manage and prevent further growth and reproduction of community cat populations. Today, we live in an animal-loving society where Americans go out of their way to care for community cats. All around Hayes County, many concerned citizens are already caring for and feeding community cats. Kyle's animal lovers support this method as an alternative to the catch-and-kill old traditional method, which has proven to be ineffective for decades as well as cruel. We need to offer a responsible, humane option for free-roaming cats. People will not abide catch-and-kill, which hasn't worked for 100 years. Those days of destroying cats are based on an old method that has failed. It's time for the Kyle City Shelter policies and practices to reflect the morale and ethical standards we share as Americans, that we don't want our taxpayer dollars and donations spent on killing animals, but truly instead to help them. We don't want more of the same. We want change. Hayes County and San Marcos already support trap neuter return, as do many cities around Texas, including San Antonio, Houston, Harlingen, Midland, El Paso, and more. The San Marcos Regional Animal Shelter is the only open intake facility, including for Kyle and Hayes County, Mutta, and San Marcos. Right now, Kyle cats are held indefinitely. I'm here tonight to ask you to take a proactive approach and utilize TNR. Newspapers are reporting and news reports about the overcapacity of the animal shelter. We cannot continue to burden that 20-year-old facility, which is understaffed and overcapacity, especially with their long-stay dogs. Hayes County is developing a plan for a new pet resource center. It will be based on humane models, which will include trap neuter return. Typically, these TNR models are part of the no-kill equation. No-kill shelters only euthanize animals that are suffering. One of the components of the no-kill essential equation is trap neuter return. It basically improves the cats as they're no longer little reproducing kitten makers, and they no longer seek the drive to fight or mate. Through a TNR program, a 75% reduction in the amount of time the cats will be held will be saving resources overall for staff time as well as across all shelter programs. Now, the average length of stay is 30 days or more. With TNR, it can be less than a week. A cat can be returned as soon as it's sterilized and recovered. The best practices progressive way of animal sheltering is all about life-saving. Please support a solution that is nationally known, trap neuter return, free-roaming cats. It's crucial to best practices for no-kill.
All right, thank you. Those are all the citizen comments forms that I have in front of me. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. Citizen comments is now closed. All right, next up, agenda orders. Is there anyone who has any items they wish to move in the order? Councilmember Flores Kail.
I just want to do a point of order, please.
Okay.
Section B of number one of the Rules of Council state all councilmembers may submit up to, but no more than three agenda items to the mayor or city manager. In this agenda, it looks like there are four, three, maybe four, under your name. So I can give you the agenda items 5, 16, 22, and 23, and that is not including number three.
You said 5, 16 what?
5, 16, 22, 23, and number three at the beginning.
All right, well, number three doesn't count because the Rules of Council state that agenda order must be placed on the item.
Does it say who it's supposed to be sponsored by?
It doesn't say, so it has to come forward. So I put my name on it, but we can put anyone's name on it or no name on it. All of that's fine, but I don't think that that's intended to reduce. So on that basis, I don't see any issue, so...
I think that would be a council decision. We still have 5, 16, 22, and 23?
Yeah, I didn't see... Well, five, agenda item number five and number 22 are the same. They're just broken down separately to allow for the presenters to present first.
Correct. We could also do that under... What I do to keep mine limited is put it under considering possible action and do discussion and possible action. When I did my proclamation, it was included as one, and then I have my other ones. So I don't think the Rules of Council necessarily spell it out. It simply states that you can have no more than three.
Yeah, you're right. I didn't see 5, 16. I didn't see the four, so it's just something I didn't notice. So I wasn't prepared for that. So that is sustained. I don't sustain agenda item three, but you're right. It is sustained on the others, so I'd like to... Because of the fact that the presentation, to allow for the folks to speak first, was separated from the action item, I would like to make a motion to excuse the Rules of Council on this item to allow for those two items to be treated as one. Motion by the mayor, seconded by councilmember Parsley. Is there discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. All right, next up is agenda item number four, appoint nominee for position of the City of Kyle Ethics Commission. Councilmember Heiser.
Yeah, I would like to nominate J.D. Sanford, who resides in Kyle, as my nominee.
Okay.
Anything more that you need from me?
We can open up to questions. If you'd like to make a motion, you're welcome to do that as well.
I'll open up to questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Heiser?
Is he present?
Councilmember Flores Kail.
Is he present?
That would be a no.
Any other discussion?
Can we postpone this until a time that he can be present?
I don't think it's required.
Absolutely, it's not, but for my vote, it would be.
Understood. Something you're allowed to make a motion on, but if you'd like to make a motion on Mr. Sanford, you're welcome to do that as well.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
But, I mean, I know that you already spoke with him. Are there any concerns that were left unresolved?
No, actually, what I asked him was if he could zoom in or make a phone call in, and he said he was going to try to do that. And I specifically said, I'm a firm believer that if you are going to be present, that will help me want to vote for you. But an absent good nominee is not one that I really can support.
Okay. Can I call a motion for...
Go ahead.
...approval of J.D. Sanford as my ethics committee nominee?
All right, the motion is made by Councilmember Heiser, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw, that we approve J.D. Sanford to the Ethics Commission. To be clear, the policy states that a council member, at their sole discretion, may make a nomination. There's no rule required to compel any ethics appointment nominee to be here. So if votes against are allowed, because anyone can vote however they want, that being said, there is no requirement that they be here to answer questions. So is there any further discussion? Councilmember Flores Kail.
Yes, in that case, my only concern was how busy he was. He... And again, this is why I wanted him here, so he could speak on behalf of himself. My conversation with him was really beneficial. I think he's a really great person. He seemed really nice and excited to be a part of the Ethics Committee. My concern was that he was extremely busy. He did state that his calendar is booked out months in advance. And so because of that, for me, I felt like it was important for him to at least try to zoom in or call in for my support.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Tobias.
Okay, with that, what you're saying, Ms. Wolfkill, having you spoke to him, saying how busy he is, do we have an issue with him if we need to call a... Or if a call of Ethics Committee meeting needs to be handled within the 72-hour mark? Would he be able to attend? Would he be somebody that could be dependable on that end to be able to provide the information and ethics opinion on a situation or a critical incident?
Well, I feel like we're all busy, so having that concern from someone or hearing that that their schedules are booked out in advance, mine is as well. I wouldn't have asked him to participate as my nominee if I didn't think that he was reliable and would be available when needed. I think his question of asking what the responsibilities are are the right thing to do, to set expectations before you make any decision as to whether or not you want to do something. So that would just be how my take on the matter.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Zuniga.
So I've spoken with Sanford before, also bear. I think he's a very knowledgeable person. How frequently does he follow, I guess, council meetings? Is he very aware of city council?
He's very aware, yes. He watches nearly every meeting, to my knowledge.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries six to one. All right, next up is agenda item number five, Presentation on the Benefits of Trap Neuter and Release as it relates to Hayes County's overall regional animal shelter plans. We heard from Ms. Boyet. This is listed as a presentation, and I wanted to allow the San Marcos Regional Animal Shelter to come forward and give a few comments regarding the plans. Obviously, Hayes County recently adopted a resolution supporting trap neuter release, or as it is, I guess, being technically, trap neuter vaccinate and return is the current acronym. We love our acronyms in government. So after discussing some with the animal shelter in the county behind their rationale, I thought this might be a good opportunity for us to hear specifically about this plan. And then we would have time, maybe at the end of the meeting, where we could discuss with our own department, Animal Control, as well as internally to decide whether we wish to join the county and San Marcos and others behind this effort. So with that said... Kristi Bandic, if you would... Is she here? I think she's virtual, right, to present? So she couldn't be here due to conflict, but I do believe she's here to present virtually. So go ahead.
Hello, sorry, I've got some terrible lighting behind me. Good evening, mayor and council. How are you guys?
Just fine, thank you.
I'm going to adjust my lighting so y'all can see. So, yeah, we're not super prepared for this. This is kind of something that was sprung on us right going into the long weekend that we were on you guys' agenda. So I don't have anything formal prepared for you guys tonight, but I am here to answer any questions that you guys have about TNR. This is a program I'm very familiar with. I've implemented it successfully at several other shelters that I've worked for and in ways that are targeted and actually see results. It's not just willy-nilly fixing a cat here and fixing a cat there. So when we do this, we want it to be something that's impactful to our cat population so that we can actually reduce that population over time. So I guess if you guys have any specific questions, fire away, I'm happy to answer.
Kristi, can you talk a little bit about what the program is and how it's being adopted in Hayes County? As well as, like, you could potentially talk about the impacts as well as some of the detractors, such as overpopulation, and then also maybe your impression of what the cost would be if the city were to participate in this program or savings?
Right, so San Marcos itself has been... We've had a TNR program in San Marcos for a number of years now. That's part of our implementation plan for the shelter. So I can tell you probably the best way to sum it up for you guys in my most recent experience with it. I took over a little shelter in a little bitty town called Kirby. If you've never heard of it, you would be forgiven. It's a little tiny suburb in San Antonio. It's about 2.5 square miles in size, maybe a population of about 8,000 people. Most of that population's below the poverty level, just to give you the demographics. We were able to get grant money secured and fix about 2,500 cats in about a year and a half, and we saw a 90% reduction in the number of cats that were coming in and needing to be sheltered long-term at the shelter. So mainly, we just had our geriatric kids that, you know, were a little too old to be on their own. You know, if we found a cat that was declawed, that didn't need to be outside, somebody who had been injured, occasional neonatal kittens that we would see. We had, I think, two litters of kittens come in the year after we finished the program and wrapped up our spay-neuter efforts, and both of them had been abandoned in the bathroom at the park. So we don't even know where those kittens originated from. So, you know, but that was doing it in a very targeted way. The cost savings, there's a lot of grant money available out there for these kinds of programs. So this is something that can be largely funded through grant opportunities. You know, a spay-neuter is expensive, but it's also much more expensive to keep these animals long-term at the shelter as far as staff time and, you know, just all of our operational costs. So it's much more cost-effective for us to be able to get these cats out of the shelter, moved in where they need to be, back into their home, where we know they have people caring for them. So I can definitely send you guys anything you need as far as cost breakdown goes. Just tell me how, you know, like, there's a million ways to calculate that. So if you take our annual budget and you divide it by the number of animals that come in annually, and then divide it again by 365 days a year, it's about $2.50 per animal per day. Right now, I have about going on 300 animals at the shelter. So do the math on that. It adds up really quickly. So those cost savings, you know, when we're talking, are we keeping an animal for three or four days for it to have surgery and then recover versus are we keeping an animal for 30, 40, 50, 60 days or longer? Because it doesn't have an outlet, that cost adds up tremendously over time. So anything you guys need as far as cost analysis breakdown, let me know. I'd be happy to get it for you.
You said of the 300... You said there's roughly 300 animals. Do you know about how many of those are cats? And then also, of those cats, roughly, how many of those are coming to you from the city of Kyle as compared to San Marcos?
Right now, it's mainly dogs are kind of our strength at the moment. Kitten season doesn't officially start. We start seeing that happening about the end of February. We start to get the mamas coming in. So, you know, at any point in time in the spring, this number is going to be higher. Right now, we don't have a lot of cats. I can definitely get you guys the breakdown on how many animals are received specifically from Kyle. I don't have it right in front of me, but I'm happy to get that for you if you want some definite numbers for the calculations.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Parsley.
Hi, thank you so much for being here to answer questions. So I was going to ask, how many cats usually do you get from Kyle? How about dogs? So you're saying that if we have mostly dogs right now, would you be neutering these dogs and then releasing them to who? Where would they go?
This program only applies to... Yeah, this program only applies to cats. Trap neuter and return is not appropriate. Dogs present more of a public safety risk to, you know, chasing cars, chasing kids on bikes. Cats are typically not doing that. So we don't have the same public safety concerns as we do with dogs. So, yeah, this program is specifically for cats.
So when they... When we trap... So first of all, I do have a question. Who traps the cats? And then when they get released, you said they go to families, go back to their family. So basically, we're just taking cats from a family and then neuter them and vaccinate them for them and then just giving them back to the same family?
No, so these are either not owned cats or cats that are just cared for by community members. So they're not owned. This is not... We're not taking people's pets into the shelter and providing, you know, free services for them. Unfortunately, we just don't have the budget to do anything like that. You know, when we... Sorry, my dogs are crazy. This is what happens when you invite the animal shelter people to your meeting. You've got parking dogs. So we... I'm telling you all, it's my life. So this is not a situation where we're going to be offering services to the general public for their owned pet cats. This is a situation where these are cats that are living on the streets. They have people who are feeding them and providing care for them out of compassion for these animals. So we are removing those animals temporarily, providing spay-neuter vaccination, microchipping, so they can be identified. We're clipping the tip of the left ear so that they're easily visually identified as spayed or neutered. They're not going to be trapped again for this purpose. And then those cats are going back to their home, meaning their colony. This is their outdoor home. These are basically wild animals when you're talking feral cats. They're not going to go live in a home with people or with a family. But they do really well. They're generally very successful on their own or just with loose care from folks who are kind-hearted people who are out there feeding them. So when these cats are coming in and they're healthy and we can see that they're doing okay in their outdoor homes and their colonies with the public feeding them, those would be the cats that would be eligible for this program. Does that kind of answer your question?
Sort of. And so who will be catching the cats?
There are a ton of volunteers already out there already doing this. This is going to allow them to do this without fear of getting in trouble because right now, they're afraid that they're going to get in trouble for trying to help these cats because of the current policies and ordinances that we have in place. So there's tons of volunteers. This is a program, if we can get funding, the shelter can participate in. The animal control officers are already trapping cats. The public is trapping cats. So these cats are coming in already. This gives us an outlet for these cats, and it gives us a really good opportunity to educate the public as well and get their buy-in as we go. The way I've done that in the past is we've gone and targeted neighborhood by neighborhood. So let's say this neighborhood on the south side of town is where we see, you know, the highest percentage of our cats coming in from. That's a neighborhood that we're going to go in and target and figure out, how do we make contact with the citizens in this neighborhood? Explain what we're doing. Explain why this is beneficial to them. Get them to help. And you know what? When you're done trapping cats in that neighborhood and you kind of shut the faucet off on the breeding, the public sees the positive impact that it's having, and then they monitor it for you. And if a new cat shows up that's not ear-tip, they are calling you and they are trapping that cat because they see, hey, look, this is the one thing that happened that worked. So it's a lot of education. It's a lot of public outreach. Things like that kind of all simultaneously need to happen. But there's so many people already out there who are doing this and who want to jump in and help us with this. We just have to allow them to.
I have one more question. I have my last question. Do I have anybody from Animal Control here? Thank you. How many cats do we usually... Do you guys usually get called for in the city of Kyle?
Brianna Getty's Neighborhood Services Supervisor. So I have fiscal year 2022's statistics in front of me. We brought 230 cats to the shelter in 2022 and 214 in 2021. 177 in 2020. I have a couple more years previous to that, too.
And that's from the city of Kyle?
Yes, that's just our corrected numbers, auditing their numbers from the shelter.
Okay. That's all I need. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tobias.
Great, I'm glad you have those numbers because that's exactly the questions that I have. We have a database already in line of how many of these animals that are being captured, which is very helpful. Do we also have a specific area of neighborhoods where these animals are being found as well? A breakdown of the, let's say, the 230 versus the 214, which neighborhoods and which areas of town where it's rural, where it's neighborhoods or something like that. And then, of course, if we were to move forward with this, again, we'd have to look at the overall bottom line as far as the budget, the cost of everything. How much is this going to cost the city to be able to implement a program like this? But so out of the 230, 214 that you said, about what part of town do you see a lot of these cats come from?
I, we have a wide variety of areas that we're dealing with. Driving around, I know where there are more cats in particular areas. And I can always pull more statistics to figure out where where our specific problem areas are. But I would say that it's kind of a little bit everywhere that we deal with. And it's usually based off of complaints from people having issues with cats that they're they're wanting us to come pick up or injured animals, too.
And I guess, overall, what would you think the city would need to budget the overall dollar amount that you would think that the city would need funding for to implement an ordinance plan like this to be able to assist with this? It's, that's what it's going to come down to. Unfortunately, you know, unfortunately, we have the volunteers. We have everything else, like if we have to feed and and the medicines, whatever it is. But I think the the overall question is going to be, what's the overall cost?
Yeah. And that's, yeah, that's, the other issue is how many of these cats are friendly cats versus non-friendly cats, because we do have some of these cats. The majority of what we've been dealing with for a while now have been more your friendly, just nuisance cats in an area than than your, because we have not been doing as much trapping as we were doing when I first started with the city. So, and because just time-wise, we don't have that manpower or time to be doing trapping. Trapping is very, very time-consuming. And we can't effectively do it as animal control officers because you kind of have to work a different shift. You kind of have to do it evening. And you have to be there when they're in the trap and transfer them out. So we're not always that effective with our cat trapping when we have a problem area where someone calls about concerns. And cost, that would be something we'd have to get with the shelter on what what they're getting spays and neuters for cost-wise.
It probably would also be under maybe the y'all's budget as well, correct? If you were to say, at this specific time, we are going to go and handle this specific trapping, and it's going to cost this much hours of work, this much time, and so forth, would that have to be also considered as well?
We have not had a budget for that in the past. Our, pretty much, our budget is just the sheltering portion of it. But I know in the past, we have put that in the budget for giving some additional funds towards San Marcos for for spay and neuter in the past.
The reason why I'm asking these questions, Council, is because if we implement this this ordinance, which which I see there's a lot of positives involved, we want to be able to make sure that we have the correct funding for this to where if we need to increase or decrease in the future, we can be able to manage it in that sense. And then if we see that the that the majority of these animals are coming from another area, San Marcos or Martindale, whatever, it's not the burden on our taxpayers here in the city of Kyle. Okay, we're able to take care of our own and our own problems with our own animals and be able to make sure that these animals are treated humanely. So that's kind of why I'm asking a lot of these questions about the the funding, the money, and also to be able to transport, which will also cost funds as well, feeding, which will also cost money as well, and any kind of medications or any kind of vaccinations that these animals would need. Those would have to come out of some kind of a budget. So that's why I'm bringing those questions up. Thank you, Mary. I yield the floor.
Councilor Zuniga.
Yes. So my, my, my concern with this is, you said that it takes a lot of time to go out and trap the community cat. But when you picked up these 200 cats, you still had to go out there to catch the cat. So if you caught the cat and you took the cat to the shelter, that's still the same amount of time that it would take to to go out to the neighborhood, make the, get the, make the catch and transport him to the shelter. So I really don't, I I kind of failed to see the distinction and more difficulty in trapping versus just showing up to catch them and taking them to the shelter. It's the same amount of time.
So the majority of the cals that we receive regarding cats are someone who is already with their own personal live trap, trapped that cat. So it is already contained, and all I'm doing is transferring it from its live trap that is currently in into a transfer cage or a or a carrier. Or it is a friendly cat that comes up to me and I can pick it up, put it, and go. If I am doing a concerted effort to trap live, doing live trapping of a cat in a particular area, I am going to potentially be going there in the way that we can do it. We're going there three times a day and checking that trap. Or if our complainant calls us, we'll come back earlier. But that's, of course, call priority pending. If I have a vicious dog call to respond to as opposed to that cat in the trap, I'm going to get to that prior priority call first.
So if a citizen already trapped the cat for you, they saved you the time of capturing that cat. So now you're just doing the pickup. So it kind of, it balances back out. I think time is still time, unless I'm missing more out of this.
Just as, as far as-
I'm not trying to give you a hard time. I'm just trying to-
As far as our, I'm just, our general call volume, we can go on 20-plus calls a day. And going to a live trap call three times on top of those other 20 calls that we go on is is a lot of, lot of, lot of time. And going to San Marcos with those animals later on, because that's part of our day, too.
Councilor Heiser.
Thank you for being here. Just if you could help me better understand, from what I'm hearing, it seems like the only additional budget that would be required is if we were to bring on an additional person to work those prime shifts that you were describing in the evenings. Is that accurate?
With, with trapping, there are some, some concerns of, yes, we would have to have some, some additional staffing. That person would, that would be their job 100%. That would be their job. We also, if if we are getting thing, if it is spay and neuter, we're going to have to have veterinarians that are available to do those surgeries. That's been a shortage issue recently, too, is there's not, there is some shortage of veterinary staff to do those procedures. San Marcos just got a vet after looking for a vet for a year for the shelter. So that's part of it, too. If we're out there trapping them, then the shelter needs to have the ability to do the surgeries. And they need to be able to do the surgeries that day. So if we're bringing them in, 10 cats, they need to have a vet who can do 10 surgeries in a day.
I feel really stupid asking this question, but under the current, the current plan, are we, we are bringing them to the shelter and doing the surgeries that you specified, right, already with what we are bringing to the shelter?
If they are adopted from the shelter, they're doing the surgeries.
Okay. So if they are not adopted and they're just brought to the shelter, zero procedures are taking place as it stands?
Because they can be reclaimed, they can be transferred to rescues. So not all of them are going to surgery at the shelter.
And what is the time that a cat has to be in the shelter before, like, some sort of grace period after picking it up, where we can possibly perform the surgeries, surgeries and then release it?
They are 72 hours is the current straight hold time for dogs or cats without identification. Dog or cat with identification is five days at the shelter. And then they become property of the shelter at that point. And then they can be transferred, adopted out, any of those options.
Just one more. You had mentioned that last year, there were 230 cats, 2021, 214. You didn't go back any further, but I also heard you say that it seems like over time that you've done less of the trapping. Do you, do you, the correlation, I know the population's increasing, but the correlation of the increase, I would be interested to see going back to 2017, 2018, to see if, as you described, doing less of the trapping as time has gone on, but then more cats are being brought in. Because one of the concerns with this or, you know, the, the value of switching to a program like this is cats reproducing.
So we do have statistics back through 2018. And it was, we were in the 125 in 2018. 2019 is 131, and 177 in 2020. We have, there are still, we have three positions in animal control. We have two officers that are are full-time. So with our call volume, we just weren't able to trap. We kind of had to give up on something when we were responding to our calls. So the, and we do loan out traps to residents. If they want to trap, if they want to borrow one of our traps, they can borrow one of our traps. But they have to set them under our, our specifications. But, yeah, we have done less trapping, also just because the, the shelter and they're being full and not being able to take in the animals, too. That's been also an issue. We've been trying to lessen the amount of cats going to the shelter.
One more quick one. Would it be, would you agree that if if we were to move forward with a program like this, if the city were to properly educate the community on the community's responsibility or ability to trap these cats themselves, do you see this as something that could work? Or would you be favorable to at least looking at this as something that we're going to try here? Is that, what is your feeling on that?
The, one of the biggest issues that we see in, education is one of the biggest things we need to explain to people. Sending these cats out there to fend for themselves in the first place is probably one of our biggest issues. People get the cats and then they send them out there. We see cats that are less than a year old that haven't been spayed and neutered, and they're out, out everywhere. So if if we would get them before that happens, would be the first big impactful portion of this. We also need to confirm that we're not having issues with state law. We have discussed that in the past. Also, maintaining rabies law with these animals, they do have to be vaccinated for rabies as far as the state law is concerned, when they're spayed and neutered and annually after that. So they need, do need to be vaccinated so we contain and not have any rabies issues also. So that is, that is another concern, whether or not we'll be able to trap these animals again and get them vaccinated for rabies. So.
Councilor Florce Cale.
Thank you. I'm really surprised to see this back on the agenda. I feel like we just went around this, this, this ride. And so I have several questions, and then I have a concern at the end. So for me to understand this TNR program, who is going to pick up and drop off these cats?
And that has always been a question that we've wanted to ask, too, because it is, it is time-consuming to get those animals at the shelter. Since we are working with San Marcos, it's an hour turnaround to get down to San Marcos and come back just to drop off an animal. And then we would be doing the reverse direction, picking those animals up at San Marcos and going to the location and releasing them. One of the requests that we've, when we've been talking with everybody who's been wanting to do this, was volunteers. We would need volunteers to be able to do that. That's, that's a lot of, lot of our time picking them up and making sure they're ready to go, too, and that they're safe in the area that they've been released at. So, yeah, that is, it is, it is a time-consuming thing to be picking them up also and going the other direction.
Sounds like in the last three years, you gave us numbers to add up 621 cats. So those would be an extra 621 cats within the city of Kyle. Is there a place for these cats to go in the freezing weather?
That is one of our city ordinance requirements is outdoor cats are just like dogs. They are supposed to have shelter outside. And we do, I was getting a lot of calls when we were anticipating the freeze, we got a lot of calls from people that were concerned about cats that were outside, not having, not necessarily having shelter. So that is an issue that we would need, there would need to be some housing for them.
Do we know if TNR has a plan for overpopulation, if the city now has an extra 600-plus cats in three years?
And that was one of my concern is how many, how many is safe to release in, in a particular area. And like I say, the majority of these cats are, are friendly cats. And I don't have my adoption numbers broken down into cats versus dogs on my, on my list. But out of the 506 domestic animals we brought to the shelter in 2022, 257 of those were adopted. So we do see a majority of our cats anymore are more of the friendly or not necessarily the ones that are going to be coming back to the area.
Can you, can you say that statistic again? I'm not, I'm just, I just want to make sure I heard what you said. Of the 600, 250 were adopted? Is that what you said?
No, I was, just fiscal year 2022, I don't have dogs versus cats on adopted numbers broken down. So we had 230 cats and 276 dogs that were, went to the shelter and 257 of those animals were adopted.
Thank you. How would the city make sure that the cat is going to go back to the right place that it came from?
And that's-
And that could be for TNR, if they have a plan of execution and how that occurs to make sure that somehow the cats don't end up in the wrong place.
Is Christie still on?
Yes.
Yep, still here. I didn't want to interrupt. I can clarify a lot of these for you guys. So right now, our current outlet for cats, if they are not friendly, is we spay and neuter them, and they stay in a cage for about a month, sometimes two, until we find somebody who is looking for a barn cat to hunt as a mouser in their barn. So some of the adoptions that you guys see does not mean that that cat was friendly and adoptable. It means that that cat was, stayed in our shelter for quite some time until we found somebody who just happened to be looking for a mouser that is not friendly. That's, that's kind of a hard sell. So the cost savings, I think, was another question that came up. We did just recently hire a veterinarian. We are no longer paying per procedure for spay and neuter. So we pay a vet hourly. She is there to do whatever we need her to do, whether that's spay neuters, whether that's medical checks on the animals at the shelter. So rather than having to break down $60 per surgery, we have a vet there. So we're looking at vaccinations and the turnaround time, what's the cost of food and and staff time for the few days that that animal's required to be there. So what was the other question you guys had? Oh, the rabies vaccination was another big point I want to make. Right now, you currently have probably several thousand cats running around Kyle with no rabies vaccination at all. The state law is still currently that cats need to be vaccinated once every three years. But the science says that once a cat is vaccinated, that cat probably has immunity for several years. So if you go from having thousands of cats with no vaccination status at all to having a significant portion of those cats having any vaccination status, you've instantly made your community safer against rabies just in that. Whether or not you can successfully re-trap that cat every year, every three years, you're instantly safer. What we have been doing with, if trapping and euthanizing cats worked, we would have shut our shelters down decades ago. We have been doing this system of sheltering where we trap and we euthanize these cats en masse for 100 years in this country, and it has not had any impact on our numbers. In fact, we've seen our numbers go up. So it's kind of the definition of insanity. It's like slapping a Band-Aid on a severed limb is kind of what we've been doing. So trap neuter and return, when implemented properly, there's cost savings, particularly in our situation, because we have a vet now. It's not paying a contract vet per procedure anymore. And it's, it's savings in my staff time. It's savings in ER visits for my staff because they were attacked and bitten by one of these wild cats that's having to stay at the shelter for months and months. It's incredibly inhumane for those cats to stay in these cages for months and months. So if that kind of helps clarify just kind of some of the topics I heard going, there's, like I said in my initial statement, there's so many volunteers who are chomping at the bit to help with this. We just have to be able to allow them to do it. Our system, we track these animals as they come through. Where did they come from? What address were they trapped at? You know, these animals have a kennel card that travels with them through the system with that information on it. So we know exactly who this animal is, where it came from, where it needs to go back to. So, you know, it's, we have an organized system for that. We just, we just really need to allow these volunteers who want to help with this and these community members who are interested in helping these cats to do that. That's, that's the first step that we need to get to is allowing this to happen. And then we can figure out the funding and, you know, if we want to go large scale, or if we want to target a neighborhood, like, you know, there's formulas or how you calculate that out and figure out what your target number of cats is to make an impact. calculate that out and figure out what your target number of cats is to make an impact. But we got to shut the faucet off before we try to clean up the water all over the floor. And that's, that's all we're trying to do with this, is shut the breeding faucet off so that we stand a chance in getting the population under control.
Okay. So would the city have to hire their own, its own vet? Or would they, they would go to the San Marcos Regional Shelter?
If, our contract is currently that you bring us the animals that you pick up. So if that contract is still in place and, and that's the direction that we stay on, the path that we stay on, if these animals are coming to our shelter, we're going to do what these animals need. You know, I would much rather have an outlet for these animals when I'm done doing what they need though, rather than them staying in cages for months and months and months on end.
So would we have to pick up and drop off? Like we, we drop them off with you?
If, if we allow, if we allow volunteers to help, then you know, there may be times where there's not a volunteer available. And, and if one of the officers is there, we say, hey, this cat's from Kyle, you're heading back that direction. But they're already dropping off the cats and citizens are as well. It's not just the animal control officers that are bringing us animals. Your citizens are bringing us animals from Kyle as well. So sometimes that citizen is willing, especially when you get into the community education portion of this, sometimes those citizens, you know, hey, they, they don't want the cat to come to the shelter and be euthanized. They just want it to stop having babies under their porch. So sometimes we can say, hey, cool, you know, we're going to fix this cat and come and pick it up on Thursday afternoon and it's ready to go home with you and it's not going to have more babies. And they're, they're so grateful for that. So there's a ton of different ways that this can happen. Every situation's very, it's variable, but there's volunteers, there's private citizens, there's, you know, the animal control officers are coming to our shelter almost on a daily basis. So it's not, you know, extra trips that they're having to make to drop off cats that they're already going to be bringing us. Or if they're going back to Kyle to drop those cats off if they have time, you know. I've, I've been an animal control officer for 23 years. I completely understand they have calls to get to and that's their job. It's not to drive cats around town. So we definitely want to find ways to, to help them with that and not put the burden squarely on these guys who have a very important job to keep our, our neighborhood safe from particularly dogs that are dangerous. So, but you know, it's just allowing, allowing the community to participate and to be a part of the solution. This isn't a, this isn't a problem that the shelter is going to solve all by itself. We need community participation. We have to allow the community to participate.
Okay. So thank you. I appreciate that. I do have two legal questions, Paige. So we, I have a friend who was actually just bit by her family's cat last year, the year before last, and she got cat scratch fever. So if we see a cat that has its ears nipped and so we know it's a trap, neuter, release, and it bites somebody, is there a legal liability in that for the city?
There's obviously still quarantine requirements for the.
I'm sorry. I was asking our legal, our legal staff. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't want to.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Mayor and Council, Paige Stein, City Attorney for the record, that it would, I would like to look at that a little bit further, but in general, that just the city spaying, neutering and releasing a cat that the city doesn't otherwise control or it's not owned by the city, that would be difficult to establish the city's liability for that situation, I believe. But I would like the chance to look at that a bit further if that's something the council's wishing to move forward with.
Yeah, I think my, my main concern is going to be the legal liability. I just sent you an email from an opinion that's being requested from the attorney, Attorney General's Office, and it is specific to this. And they're asking the Attorney General, they're asking the Attorney General if it's legal, if TNR is legal. And this was submitted November 10th, 2022. And this could mean nothing or it could be an issue. I don't know.
Your city staff is already on top of that. They've already asked that question.
So what is your, like your opinion? My fear is like there's maybe some legal liability if this comes back and they say, no, this isn't legal and no, you cannot do this.
Well, it would, it's dealing with the issue of whether the animals are being abandoned because that's against the law to abandon an animal. And so that's what's being reviewed by the Attorney General's Office. We've, we've done an initial review. Obviously you'll have an answer when the AG opines on it, but there are jurisdictions throughout the state that have these types of programs. And so if the opinion comes out that it's not lawful, then, then everyone's going to have to adjust. But in the meantime, there are provisions in the statute that give you the ability to enact the, the, this, this type of program if something the city wanted to do with some findings with council. Because the, the question about whether it's, there's a question about whether it's reasonable or unreasonable to abandon the animal. And so the program, if you determine that it's for the benefit of the public health and safety to enact this program and then release the animal back into the wild because of the information that's given here about, you know, it doesn't do anything to euthanize animals. It doesn't control population. These are better alternatives to that. We can address public health and safety issues with these, with these programs. Therefore, it's reasonable to release the animals back into the wild. Those are findings the council can make and, and typically councils' findings are given deference.
Yeah. So my concern is if we do move forward with this and we say, yes, we want to do this, if this opinion comes back, could that have an effect? Like, are we planning all this to have an issue in the end if it comes back that, no, you can't do this? So is it better to wait or is it better to move forward and just assume that it's going to be a no?
Well, that's, that would ultimately be a policy decision for the council. And if the council wanted to implement a program, we could identify what some of the requirements are in the statute that you would have to make findings of to be outside of that, the criminal statute. And, but if you decide you want to wait until the AG has issued an opinion, given some of the issues you're raising, that's reasonable for council. But it's really council's discretion to decide what you think is appropriate and when to enact it.
I think those are, I guess I have one more question for the, I guess too, because I asked our staff, but I didn't realize that we could ask TNR as well. But so do you guys, what do you guys recommend for these cats that we put back out when the weather gets to be below freezing? Because now we have, I mean, per year, at least an extra 200 cats outside. And I, and I wonder, is that humane as well to put these cats in? I mean, it's not very often, but you know, it gets freezing and I wouldn't be comfortable having the cats out there.
So I want to clarify that we're not putting extra cats into your jurisdiction. These are cats that already exist in your jurisdiction. We are just leaving those cats where they're at and eliminating their ability to breed. So we're not, we're not increasing your population. We're actually going to decrease the population over time if this is done in a strategic and targeted way, which is what we want to do. Outdoor cats are pretty resourceful. They get in, they get up in cars. They get up in wheel wells. We see that a lot in the winter months. So they, they do have a way of finding shelter. There's also a lot of cat caretakers that go around and feed these colonies. I can bore you guys for hours with cat behavior if you want me to. Just let me know. So cats are social and, I'll go, I'll be quick. Cats are social animals and they live in units called colonies, which are like a, just a congregation of, of cats that have socialized with one another and live with one another. There's a lot of people that go through town and they, they, these specific colonies are kind of their colonies that they go and feed and take care of. There's people who make little shelters for them. We see it on Facebook all the time, making little shelters out of the little like Rubbermaid tubs and hay and, and insulation, things like that for them. So there's a lot of public support for this. If we allow the public to help with it, there's a lot of options out there for ways that we can help to provide additional shelter for these cats. You know, but it, removing these cats, there's a, there's a phenomenon called the vacuum effect that we see, and it's just biology. If you remove a chunk of a population away, particularly in cats, which are very prolific breeders, if you remove a segment of that population, the females, the queen cats, that's what they're called, that are left in that population will actually breed faster and produce larger litters to fill the void in their colony population. So we're kind of not doing anything. If we could go and trap a whole colony of cats and things would get better for about a month, and then all these other cats are going to either move in or the surrounding colonies are going to breed faster so that they can take over that, that available space. If, if you kind of think about it like a jar of marbles, that's kind of what cat colonies do. So you have this jar of marbles and these marbles are all kind of butted up to one another in the jar. And if you take one out, the marble above it falls into that space. That's what cat colonies do. When you see them kind of going around and marking on the trees, the boy cats, they're establishing the boundaries of that, that marble, that colony. So if you remove those guys, new cats go, hey, this is free space for us. We're going to come in. So you're not getting anywhere by, by taking the trap and remove and euthanize approach. We're going to get a lot further if we involve the community in being a part of the solution to the problem that ultimately the community has made. We haven't made it. The community has made this problem by not spaying and neutering their animals and not being responsible. Not everybody, but a lot of them. And so we want to invite the community to be a part of that solution with us so that we can actually make some progress and hopefully one day not have animal shelters anymore. That would be great.
So you, you bring up a really valid.
I would love to have a nice.
You bring up a really valid point, which I wanted to touch on. But before I do that, I also want to say that when I say there's going to be an extra 600 cats, it's because normally you would take those cats away from the area. So initially, we're going to have more cats. They're just not going to be able to reproduce because you're bringing them back. It's not like we, we normally bring them back. But, and with that said, my question to the council would be, is it a better, is it better to do this TNR? Or would it be more beneficial to provide vouchers for families with cats and have them spayed or neutered? And then you're really hitting, I think, with a core issue of people can't afford it or people don't know about it. But we could figure out cost wise, what is better for the city to include our staff time, which is going to be an hour there and back? Is it better to do these vouchers for the families with the cats? Or is it better to do this TNR?
So both things have to happen together. I want to interrupt. I just want to say, both things have to, some of these cats do have families that, that claim them and own them and, and they may need access to resources, but a big majority of these cats that we see come, our reclaim rate for cats is about 3% on a good month. 3% of the cats coming in get reclaimed. So most of these cats are born on the streets. Some of them that are socialized might have limited exposure to humans. They have people who are feeding them. And so they're used to seeing people and being around them. But nobody is bringing this cat home and into its home and microchipping it and getting a collar with a bell. And you know, that's not the majority of the cats that we're talking about here. So we need, we need access to both to answer your question fully so that you guys can consider it. We need to be able to provide resources to pet owners, but at the same time, we have to address these animals that have populated out on their own on the streets who have never had an owner. You know, and there's not enough owners left for us to find owners for them now. So that's where we get the volunteers who go out and, and graciously provide the care for these animals that are kind of unclaimed. So.
Okay. I appreciate that. But just for the record, we can only afford to do one. So I think collectively as a council, we need to figure out if it's TNR or if, you know, there's an alternative to that. I agree. I think together would be a great solution. But the city and as, as a resident and as a taxpayer and as other taxpayers in this room, I feel like we need to make sure that we're not overspending in this area.
Councilor Brett Scholl.
Yeah, Council, we've been talking about this for an hour and it's under presentation. So I would like to ask that we wait for further discussion until we actually, when we actually come on the Consider Impossible action item.
We can do that or we can just bring that forward and go ahead and take the action that we want to take now that we've discussed it. That was what my next suggestion was going to be. So because of the length of discussion. I have things that, that I would like to say. I do, I do have a question for Christie and Brianna as well. But the, the question I have is, so I have a cat that is in the neighborhood. It's shared by about five or six households. And by shared, I mean, that's the general area where it lives. It stays in the flower beds, gets up on the porches. We see it all the time, not every day, but most of the time. It's not clipped. Nobody knows who it is, but I think people leave food out for it and we love it. We're close to naming it, I think, some of my kids are. And so it was something that Christie said at the beginning, which was that there are folks who might want to see a cat like that neutered or spayed and vaccinated for the health of the community, but would be afraid to try to go down that path because if we trapped that cat and sent it, and even with volunteers and sent it to San Marcos, current policy dictates that the cat would be killed. So if it can't be adopted. And so there's no, no chance for us to create that positive momentum by allowing for a cat to remain in the community. And you know, if a cat is dangerous, then it falls under our Dangerous Animals Ordinance, as far as I can tell, which is a completely different set of rules. So it's not a situation where if there's a dangerous cat, that it would be necessarily re-released back into the population, depending on the danger level. We have rules in place for that. So you know, in, in my mind, it's a small, cheap experiment. I don't know what, if we're already, I think our San Marcos Regional Animal Shelter budget has tripled, quadrupled in the last few years. Some, some insane amount of increase in spending that we're already having to pay. So our costs related to animal shelters, housing and treatment are going up regardless of what we do here. So in my mind, this is a cheap experiment because if we try to take the more humane approach and go through a trap, neuter, return policy, we could, we could see where we stand, you know, a year from now. But I can just see how there could be a lot of benefits plus a certain humanity to reducing the amount of cats that are killed without necessarily reducing the population. So you know, those are my thoughts. But if there are no objections, I'm going to bring item 22 up now so that we can, we've all discussed, we can try to take action and decide which way we want to go. My question is, I want to be clear. If I was to choose to try to trap that cat and we had the current policy in place, there'd be no method for that cat to be returned back to where it is. The example I'm using about the one in our neighborhood. But if we adopted this policy, would we have, would there be a provision where someone, one of the neighbors could trap the cat and then a volunteer, ala one of the neighbors, could drive it to the San Marcos shelter? The veteran, veterinarian there could spay or neuter that cat? And then we could bring that cat back with vac, fully vaccinated with the new program without having to use an animal control officer at all? Is that right or not right?
That is exactly how it works, sir. That is exactly, that is exactly the model we want to see happen, is that community involvement. Get these animals to us, let them, let us get them fixed. Spay, neuter is the number one thing. That saves more lives than anything else we can do. So that community involvement, getting those animals to us so that we can do what that animal needs and getting that animal out of the shelter where it doesn't need to be. That's not a happy place for them.
All right. Well, if there are no objections, I'm going to bring, go ahead and read out Agenda Item 22, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Hayes County's Recent Resolution Supporting the Practice of Returning Community Cats to Their Original Location. We'll have that conversation now. Is there discussion? I'm in favor of trying it out. I don't think that it would necessarily cost that much money. Councilor Parsley.
I have a question for Brianna. How many people, whenever you get calls about a cat in the neighborhood, how many people want the cat back?
Depends on the scenario. Most, most people are calling because it's a nuisance issue. They're not typically calling because they want it back. Or it's the neighborhood cat that everybody's been feeding and when it gets sick or injured, that's when they want us involved and they don't want to take it to the vet. Kind of the same scenario, the, that community cat that everybody, everybody feeds. So the majority of our cat calls are because of complaints from nuisance issues.
Okay. So then my next point would be, if we were to approve this, do we have a list of volunteers that animal control can call? So you guys don't pick up the cat, but somebody else does. Cause I don't want to put that burden on you. So if, if, if TNR were to give you a roster of volunteers, whenever somebody calls you, hey, you know, we have a cat here that you can call, the list of volunteers, so you guys don't have to do that job, then I will be in favor of that.
I'm going to guess that Sherry would be able to provide that for me.
Okay. I just don't want.
She'd give me all kinds of volunteers if I agree to do this.
I, I, I don't want to put more on you guys' plate. So that would be my concern, that you guys can reach out to somebody and that somebody can pick up the cat. And if they went to borrow the cage from animal control, good, but somebody else does that for you.
We have a fair amount of live traps and we have a variety of live traps.
That, that would be my, my suggestion.
Councilor Tobias.
Okay. Are we going to go ahead and bring possible action on this?
I just, yeah, I just read. So we're, we're primed if you want to make a motion.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, please.
Go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to direct staff to bring budget proposal for documentation on this program, including any kind of medical procedures needed. Also to develop a policy working with TNR. Also, to develop a policy working with TNR, with our Kyle Police Animal Control, and also to develop a possible volunteer program within the city to assist with the resolution that is brought forth for returning the community cats to their original location.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Tobias, or Mayor Protem Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Forrest Cale. Is there any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Forrest Cale.
Thank you. No, he hit the head right, the nail on my head. 'Cause again, I think we need a cost analysis. We're just talking about a policy, there is no policy in the backup. I have no idea what this looks like. I have, there's no plan. I'm not against this, I just wanna make sure it makes sense for the city and for our staff and for our residents. It would also be nice to see if maybe we can get a cost analysis on what it would cost to offer vouchers to residents, because I think there's a lot of people who would also be willing to just take their cat in. I, in my neighborhood, we don't have a lot of, like, feral cats. We have a lot of domestic cats and they're running around. I don't know if they're fixed or not. I'm not gonna call to have you guys come get them, but it sure would be helpful if they were fixed.
And there are some PALS vouchers available. There are some voucher programs available.
Exactly.
All right, I'm gonna invite Ms. Sherri Boyett to come up and speak now. Go ahead.
Preventaliter.com, it is income-based and it's been in existence, I'm the founder. It's for Hays County. It's funded through grants, it's funded through Hays County and San Marcos. It's considered a social service because most of the demographics of the people that can't afford their fix, their dogs and cats, can receive vouchers. And we work with the animal control and animal protection officers. Again, it's required to have an income-based thing. So that voucher part is covered for those people who can't afford it. Also, the volunteers, we have a Facebook group, we have a Community Cat Coalition that's just started. We're working with PALS Shelter, we're working with the vet there, so there's another avenue. So we're doing fundraising, trying to do it on a case-by-case, cat-by-cat basis. There's interest in Willow Creek, there's a proven colony in Willow Creek, my neighborhood, which is pretty affluent. There's some in Wood Creek, there's some in lots of places around Hays County that are already narrowing down the population. So we have proven principle. And again, we do have some veterinarians that are, we're working with King's Highway, so they're interested in seeing life-saving programs like this so that it doesn't continue to extrapolate as Hays County grows.
Thank you. I am very familiar with the PALS, I do understand it's income-based. I'm not requesting that the city create vouchers based on income, but just, you know, based on the comparison between TNR and, you know, if we gave people vouchers, you know, maybe we would pay this much for TNR, which would cover this many vouchers, just to see a comparison. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, it's our residents who are gonna be paying for this, and so I would like our residents to benefit the most from it. But anyways, I wanna thank Tobias, Councilmember Tobias, for bringing that up. I think it's a great idea to get additional information before we make a commitment, which I'm willing to make, if it's really in the best interest of the city.
And I think with the budget proposal, we can look at all those avenues, staff, if you can just look at everything from grants to vouchers to whatever would possibly work and to bring back to council. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brett Scholl.
Councilwoman Heiser.
Yeah, just so I'm clear of what I'm about to vote on, what are the anticipated cost increases that we are gonna instruct staff to evaluate?
Yeah, it's-
Based on everything I heard here-
The problem with the budgeting question is it's extremely subjective. So we've heard testimony that we needed to hire a new veterinarian, and then we heard counter testimony that we don't. We heard testimony about how much it costs to spay and neuter, and then we heard counter testimony that says spaying and neutering is already a service that's provided without cost in San Marcos. We heard additional costs for travel, we also heard that we're already taking 200 cats or so down there at a time. Well, the conversation about whether we are gonna promote a private program to allow people to spay and neuter is not trap-neuter-and-release, that's a separate discussion, and I think it's a great discussion, we should have it. But this is designed, so I think this is probably a cost-saving, so I don't know who would be responsible for developing budget amendments when, right now, all I can see is that the only significant budgetary impact that we're currently having, which the public needs to understand when you talk about taxpayer money, is that our budget for animal control as it relates to San Marcos Regional Animal Shelter has quadrupled or tripled or whatever it is. It's a significant increase in order to house all the animals that we are sending. San Marcos and Hays County is trying to adopt a new policy, they might diminish that impact on the San Marcos Regional Animal Shelter. And so this is our way, in my opinion, of kinda coming alongside with what they're trying to do and reduce our impact, because it seems to me that the City of Kyle's impact is becoming increasingly disproportionately higher, which is also why our costs are becoming increasingly disproportionately higher. And this is very much a small, cheap experiment, so if we try it for a little while and all of a sudden cats are just running around like some scene off of some crazy movie or something like that, then, you know, it's something we can change on the fly moving forward if we didn't wanna approach this. So the motion, as I heard, was to bring back some analysis related to budgeting, to bring back a policy, which would also be a resolution of support. If you'll notice, that this item is not proposed as a resolution of support, which means, I was never proposing we take a hard vote on something today, but rather bring it up, then give staff that direction to bring back the policy. And then, what was the third aspect of it?
To directly, to work with TNR as far as how they're, you know, with the county, and also with the animal control, and also looking at possibly developing a volunteer program within the city, again, for volunteer work, also that could help, again, with this budget process and so forth, to where if we can reduce the cost of any offsetting, traveling back and forth, that we as a city develop a volunteer program from within, whether it's HOA neighborhoods, whether it's schools, whatever the case is, to help with our animal control to where we can offset those costs. That's the main thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Zuniga.
So I remember hearing this discussion last year and the same things were asked. Can we bring back budget and numbers? I believe we have enough information, we see how other cities are doing it. The shelter is at overcapacity. This would be just like a trial period to see how effective it is. It's not going to be financially that much different than what we currently have in place, and there is a large network of volunteers that, this is like coordination, kind of, the biggest issue is coordination. And I don't see how that could really tie up such an important program. I think this is something we should try. So I would make a motion that we have enough information to vote on this.
Right. Councilmember Forrest Cale.
Thank you. I just, again, like Mayor Mitchell said, we're not voting on yes or no, we're voting on bringing back a policy and stuff. So if we're doing that anyways, this is not gonna be enacted today, even if we said yes, we all agree on this. But what Councilmember Tobias is asking or offering as a medium is to just bring this information back to us. If it doesn't cost that much, if it is better, then I'm all for it. Show me those numbers, though. I can't just sit here and take other people's words for it. I have a responsibility, I gotta do my due diligence. And since that information was not in the backup, I don't know what that information is, so I can't with a, you know, clear mind, vote yes for this off of the words of people that haven't presented any supportive information.
Any other discussion? Councilman Brett Scholl, do you have your hand up?
The way I see this is that a resolution based on the motion as well as additional information, but a resolution of support will be coming forward on the next agenda and listed for a vote. Is that clear? Is that the way you see it as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? All of us in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you, Brianna, thank you, folks, for coming.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brett Scholl.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right, that was a long one, but we got one down at the end as well. Y'all ready for midnight meeting? Sorry. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number Six, CIP Road Projects and, I'm sorry, City Manager's Report.
Mayor, Council, Jerry Hendrick, Center of City Manager, for the record. First up, I'd like to invite our Parks Director, Mariana Espinoza.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. We want to thank everyone who came out on January 1st to start the new year with our annual Polar Bear Splash. It was the 19th annual splash. We had about 45 participants and about 75 people in attendance. So mark your calendars for January 1st of next year, they can splash with us. The temp was only, it was a nice warm 50 degrees, so it wasn't that bad this year. This Thursday, we have our second event of the year, which is the National Bird Day. We'll have guided bird walk out at Benton Creek Park. It will be led by the Hays County Master Naturalists. It's BYOB, Bring Your Own Binoculars, and we will walk the Wildflower Loop and pass through the new bird blind that's out there. The Youth Basketball League registration ends tomorrow, and that's for ages 12 and under. Games will be played beginning January 28th at Simon Middle School, and you can register online at citiacyle.com/recreation. This Friday, Spring Break Camp registration begins. Spring Break Camp will be held March 13th through 17th, and same website, citiacyle.com/recreation for registration. This Friday, we also open registration for our Valentine's Dance for People with Disabilities, which will be held on Friday, February 10th from 6:00 to 8:00 at Gemstone Palace. And then we have a new program starting this month called Art in the Park. It will take place at Mary-Kyler Hartson Park Monthly. The first Art in the Park is January 14th from 9:00 to 12:00, and registration is also on Team Sideline. And that's all I have today.
I'd like to say, you've done such a great job. I really enjoy all the information that you provide us in our emails and how you keep us up to date. And I do wanna ask Sherri, is it okay if we shared that information that we received from her?
By all means.
Okay, because I think it'll give the residents a good idea of what's going on, even though I feel like sometimes I think we're stagnant, that you guys are always moving behind the scenes. But thank you, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Two notes. One, I'm gonna be coaching one of the basketball teams, so please come out. I'd love to see as many, try to grow this league. I know registration ends tomorrow, but it'll be fun. I'm really excited to more kids not listening to me. So, and what was, shoot, what was the other thing? Give me a minute, I'll come.
Okay.
Next up, I'd like to invite Colleen Tierney, our Director of Library Services.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Colleen Tierney, Director of Library Services, for the record. Upcoming events at the library, during the week of January 9th, we're gonna be having our storytime, all themed on celebrating the work and life of Martin Luther King. And we have, we'll have a lot of resources available in the library pertaining to MLK. We also have our senior silver screen movie, will be featuring Selma on Friday, January 13th. That's for seniors and is at 4:00 PM. I am going to jump to the, we also are gonna be having a citywide Martin Luther King Day event that is sponsored by the Arts and Cultural Commission, that is going to be on Saturday, January 14th from 10:00 to 2:00, and it's gonna be right here at City Hall in the council chambers. We're gonna be having guest speakers to recite iconic MLK speeches for the public. And there's gonna be an itinerary, more information coming out about that, we're just nailing down who those speakers will be. So more information will be coming and we'll be sharing that on our Facebook page and website as well. We are gearing back up, we took a few weeks off for the holidays, and our staff is gearing back up for some of our regular programs that we've had in the past, and it's just important to know that they're going on in case you didn't. We have a beginner Spanish class that's gonna be on Wednesdays at 2:00, and it is open to students of all ages. And it is a continuation, however, of the first semester's beginning Spanish. So there is some Spanish, I was told that some present tense is important to have under your belt if you're gonna be able to join in that class. We also have our ESL, English as a Second Language or conversational class, that's on Thursdays at 6:30. And it's just a conversational group, it's open to all ages, there's no registration required, and it's a great way to practice with other members of the community. And then the other thing I wanted to just remind everyone about and let you all know to spread the word, that we actually have seven storytimes a week in the library, and they actually meet the needs of all different ages and interests. We have a sensory fun storytime, which is geared towards two- to five-year-olds, and it's, there's movement, there are stories, but it's actually geared for children that have sensory integration-type sensitivity. And that is on Mondays at 10:30. We have little yogis, it's a yoga and story class for little ones of all ages, that's at 10:30 on Tuesdays. We also have a pajama storytime for children under six and under on Tuesday evenings for those families that can't make the daytime stories, storytimes, we have an evening one. We have preschool storytime on Wednesdays at 10:30. We have a baby storytime on Thursdays at 10:00, a toddler storytime at 11:00 on Thursday, and we also have a bilingual storytime on Fridays at 10:30. We have some phenomenal staff that run all these programs, and so just spread the word, 'cause it is something that we are very fortunate to have this many in a week in our library. So that is it from me, unless you have any questions.
I just have a comment. I'm so grateful for all the programs that you guys have right now. It really makes me excited that you have an ESL, because that's how I learned to speak English, so I love it. If you ever need volunteers to your bilingual storytime, please let me know, I'll be happy to.
Wonderful, great to know, thank you.
I just wanna say, thank you for the guitar checkout program, that is awesome. I play guitar myself, and then I just saw that on there, and it's just, it's just amazing how we're able to interact with the residents if they wanna learn a new instrument, and that's pretty neat. It's, what it is, is that you can rent out or check out a guitar with the music and everything and learn how to play, so that's pretty neat. And to counter off of Councilmember Parsley, yes, thank you so much for being so inclusive in all the different storytimes, 'cause, you know, as, I'm sure there's a lot of moms and dads come in, they have different kids and different age groups, and especially for the bilingual program, thank you so much for being inclusive in that. Appreciate it.
And the guitar program is one that I'll probably highlight a little bit more at our next City Manager commencement, 'cause it's actually a little bit more of a robust program where we're going to be lending a variety of not-so-conventional items, artistic and technological items that we're, it's a new program that we're gonna be promoting. The guitar was just a little bit of a sneak peek, so I'm glad everyone liked it. So, yeah, if you wanna borrow a guitar, spread the word, it's two weeks, just like when you borrow a book. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, for the record, Jerry Hendrick, Center of City Manager. We continue to add high-quality, experienced staff to Team Kyle. And tonight, I'd like to introduce you to Jason Lutz, who is our new Senior Planner, Jason. Jason is a graduate of Texas State University with a degree in geography. He has a Master in Public Administration from the University of Texas at Arlington. He's served as Community Development Director for the Cities of Fredericksburg, Burnett, and Alamo Heights, the Planning Director for the City of Dripping Springs, and a Senior Planner for the City of Kerrville. We're glad to add Jason to our team, Mayor, Council, Jason Lutz.
How's everybody doing tonight? Just real quick, wanted to say I'm very grateful for this opportunity to start serving you, the citizens and the community, and excited to get started on January 9th, hopefully sooner.
Just one quick question. You came from Dripping Springs?
Yes, I worked there, yes.
All right, I have a very dear friend of mine, Mr. Howard Koontz. Did you happen to get an opportunity to work with him?
I believe so, that name does sound familiar.
All right, I was just curious. So you come from a good place, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Mayor and Council, I just wanna add, his very first home he purchased was in the City of Kyle.
Yes, it's kinda weird coming back, so, yes.
Well, welcome aboard, sir.
Welcome.
And appreciate what you're gonna do for our city. Of course, our family's Bobcats, we're a Bobcat family, as much as you two. But I see that you also served as a Community Developer Director-
Developer Director in the city of Fredericksburg.
Yes.
That was one of our trips that we took a couple of years ago during our Visionary Workshop. We really enjoyed that city. So were you able to work with a lot of the businesses there and the city managers as far as some of the up-and-coming items in that area?
Yes. The, the community has changed quite a bit from the last time. It is probably the new Napa Valley of, of Texas is kind of where, where it's heading now. So a lot of short-term rental work, a lot of alcohol.
Lots of shopping, I'm sure. Well, thank you very much, sir. Best of luck to you.
Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is CIP and Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. We don't have a Consent Agenda this time, but Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Borba, City Engineer. Mayor and Council, as you would expect, we didn't get a lot of work done the last couple of weeks mainly because of the holidays and a lot of the crews were not working. We did have some crews that were working, and they got some things accomplished this past week anyway. Laverde Park, it jumped up a little bit. We're at 78% complete. They're installing mechanical, electrical, and plumbing in the pavilion restrooms. They're installing plumbing at the kids' area and reflecting pool. They're installing plywood on the pitched roof. The flat roof is complete. They're installing some mechanical ducts at the pavilion, and the tree well concrete is completed. Their projected substantial completion date is February of 2023. You'll notice I put in parentheses, contractor believes they'll be finished by January, so we'll see what happens on that. Councilmember?
Yes, is there, are, did we lay out any kind of consequences if it's not completed by February?
I would have to defer to AGCM. There should be liquidated damages on those contracts. I'm not sure if that contract included that or not. I'd have to check with them.
Okay. Can you, how long has this project been going on?
That I don't know, Councilmember. It's been over a year. It's been over a year.
I just asked because if it's a year and we're only 78% complete, I find it hard that 22% is going to be done in 30 days. So I, you know, I just want this for our residents, and I get that it's not, it's kind of out of our control, except for it's not. So my goal is that if this is not going to be done in a timely manner, that there be some kind of consequences for the subcontractor.
I will check and see if there are liquidated damages on that contract.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
The Public Safety Center, we're about 76% complete. They're working on the Level 1 with the light fixtures. Level 2, they're working on the prime coat paint. The server room layout and racks are being installed. They're also preparing for the final grading. You can see they installed some rail there at the main lobby, and their expected completion date is early May of 2023. Wastewater Treatment Expansion Plant, we're still working on the dewatering facility. We're about 98% complete. We're still having a problem with the delivery of those variable frequency drives, so we're still having to wait on those. And we don't have a definite yet, date yet, so we're still trying to get that nailed down. Bullseye Plant Number 1 should be ready or online the week of January 16th. Archer Western is our contractor on that project. They've demobilized and removed all their equipment and trailers, and they're sharing a space with the staff in the Blora Building, which is right next to the aerators. Just to show you a little bit, they are paving some of the roads in there, so that's being done. Southside wastewater improvements, we're about 91% complete. We did repave the driveway for the Murray property. All the barriers are removed that are on the northbound Frontage Road, and we have one more service line to complete, and that should be done by the end of this month. We expect to complete everything, cleanup and everything by the end of next month. Councilmember?
Yes, I would, I would like to have a big party when this wastewater line is laid. I will pay for it. I don't know what we have to do, but this is going to be wonderful for the east side. And so thank you for not giving up.
Councilmember, I could give you a list of all the problems around this project, but I don't have, y'all don't have two, three, or four hours on that, so. Elliot Branch Interceptor, we're about 89% complete. There's still some road closures in the area. They did start some milling this week. Hopefully seeing them paving no later than January 16th and hopefully sooner. We have a good week this, this week. We have some good weather, so let's see how that holds up. They are doing their cleanup and trying to close this job out. Downtown Relocation of Overhead Lines, Spectrum has promised us they would start the overhead removal. We're still waiting on their schedules. The same goes with Frontier. We're still waiting to get a response from Frontier as to when they can give us the actual starting day. Old Post Road, they're going to be preparing driveways for concrete, but I wanted to make one comment on that, on the picture on the right. There was an elevation bust, as I call it, on the pipes, so they had to not only remove them, but they also had to replace those pipes again. So they lost about a week on that. Councilmember?
Mr. Leon, are there, will there be sidewalks on both sides of that road?
Councilmember, this project was only going to be planned to do reconstruct the road. That was it, and then replace driveways as, as needed.
It is a Tech Dot road, then?
No, it's a city road.
It's a city road?
But the county's doing the work on it.
Okay.
One other thing, let me, since you brought that up, I'm glad you brought that up. When we redesigned this road, we decided to remove the ditch on the east side of the road, and the intent was that we could come back later and put sidewalk in there. It's real difficult to put sidewalk when you have bar ditches or, or ditches in the area. So if you look at the road, when you go through there, you'll see on the east side of the road, it's fairly flat, so at least a five-foot sidewalk can go in there. I've been asked to look at a 10-foot, but 10-foot's not going to make it in there. It's just not wide enough. But it has, there, there is an option where if we want to go back and put sidewalk, it's there.
All right. Because this is the artery to 158, 150, right?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah. I did drive down that road, and it's, I was scared to drive down there at night. So can we please get some more lights from Tech Dot out there?
That would be another project. Well, that's not a Tech Dot road, so that would be a city project. Indian Paintbrush Lift Station, we're about 39% complete. The valve vault has been back, is being backfilled. They're going to be working on the gravity lines and the manhole installations for the next couple of weeks. Center Street Village wastewater line, this one's going along real well. They're about 76% complete. Actually, probably more than that. They did some major work over the weekend this past week. All the pipes and manholes are installed. They will be paving Hill Street, hopefully, starting tomorrow. And they're, end up moving and replacing some curb and driveway approaches, and we hope to have it open by January 6th. We still need about another two weeks for testing the water lines and the manholes, and then we'll clean up the site. That's our presentation.
All right. Councilmember Tobias?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Leon, for the update. Could I have these three items added either on the next agenda or the following, or like, if I could have, or we could have an update on the BB Daisy intersection for the Spring 23 update?
Okay.
That includes the sidewalks and, of course, illumination. I think sidewalks, look, they may have already been completed, but I still don't see the culverts for the lights there. And I've got parents asking if that's still possible. Number two, an update on the Lake Kyle Construction, to see where we're at on that. And the last one is if we can get an update on when we're going to see the 150 new speed limit signs for District 2, when those signs will be installed.
Councilmember, they were ready, ready to put them up the next day. We asked them to hold off so you get the notices out to the public.
Okay.
And let them know what's coming. So I think Rachel is our PIO person. She's working on that, coordinating with Tech Dot.
Okay.
So as soon as we get plenty of notice out, then we'll tell Tech Dot, go ahead and put those signs up.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll get your report again next week.
Yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Leon. All right. There is no consent agenda, so we'll go through this. Some of these items just didn't have unanimous votes, which is why they're still posted for regular action. But some of these things, we've already discussed at length as well. So next up is Agenda Item Number Eight, its second reading, An Ordinance Repealing and Replacing the City's Code of Ethics, Ordinance 961. As amended, providing an effective date and providing for open meetings. Ms. Sands, you are the sponsor of this item. Is there anything you want to add from first reading?
Just to alert council to the three changes that were made based on discussion at the last meeting. One was to, one of the comments was the attention to detail paid by the committee that reviewed this, and so Ethics Commission was capitalized throughout. The use of the word nominating was used to be consistent with city procedures as far as nominating the commission members and the city secretary's request that the retention period matched state law retention period. So the retention period for opinions was reduced from five years to four years.
Thank you, Ms. Sands. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Sands? Councilmember Floris Kail?
Not a question for you, but I do have another comment about the same thing I kind of discussed earlier. The ad stricken through the appearance of impropriety may itself be a conflict of interest. So I guess my concern would be when we recuse ourselves, and I have, on the form that we fill out, the section that I mark is the, like, impropriety or notice of impropriety. So that would be removed from that affidavit document as well?
I'm not sure if it would be. I don't know that that has been an edit. I don't think that form is an exhibit to this, no. So that form also is consistent with state law. So state law has recusal provisions, and the forms that are created related to state law, they always have a provision in there for avoiding the appearance of impropriety. And I don't, I would just suggest leaving it in there just to be consistent with that. That's kind of a form that's been developed under state law.
Okay. If that's the case, then I'd like to make a motion to leave in the sentence that is currently struck through under Section 2-142, Statement of Purpose, and it reads the appearance of impropriety may itself be a conflict of interest, and instead, just keep that in there.
I'll second it.
All right. The motion was made to put that sentence related to appearance of impropriety back in second, made by Councilmember Floris Kail, seconded by Councilmember Zuniga. Is there a discussion on the motion? We discussed this at length last time. The Ethics Ordinance, the Ethics Commission recommended to take it out. We took a vote on this item and, as well, and we chose to keep with the Ethics Commission's recommendation. So what you just said changed that, though. You just said you recommended to leave it back in in order to be compliant with state law.
What I said was on the form. The form has a provision for appearance of impropriety under the state law form that has been created. It is a catch-all for anything that a person is recusing themselves for, that they feel like they want to recuse themselves for, that does not fit into one of the specific conflicts of interest set out in state law. So it, you're asking for a recommendation. My recommendation would be to, for the form to remain the same because that form has been developed based on
Right. The form.
State law.
Okay. But the
On the ordinance that, that's a council decision. It is a council decision on the form if you want to touch the form as well. That's, I'm, I'm giving you my input based on.
Okay. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilmember Heiser.
Just real quick, could you just walk me through, like, a fake example of there being a perception of conflict of interest? I'm just trying to understand, like, logistically, how that works out in terms of there's an item on the agenda and, you know, you have a conflict of interest based on my perception, and I don't want you to, because I don't want her to vote on it. What's, you know, what is the process for something like that?
So under, under the, and I, under the ordinance, there could be an ethics violation if there's an appearance of impropriety. So that's the impact of that line in the document. Under state law, there are two main reasons to recuse yourself. One is that there's a business that's come before the city, that you receive a certain amount of income from that business, so you need to disclose and recuse. Or there's a property that comes before that you'll take action on, that you have a property interest in, and so you disclose and recuse. Anything outside of that is, there's, there's a catch-all that's in the form that's been developed over time. An example of that may be that I'm, for example, I'm a, if I'm a member of a church and I'm on the board, I don't have a, get any income from the church. I do not own any property related to the church, but the church comes before the city with an application for some type of approval. And I decide to recuse myself to avoid an appearance of impropriety, but I'm not technically, I don't technically have a conflict of interest under state law, but I choose to recuse myself to avoid any issues, to avoid an appearance of impropriety. So that's an example of where I would check, I would click that, check that other box.
Well, yeah. I guess as we all know, perception is different. It's all, you know, mine is different than someone else's. So if there's, if this is, comes down to the term perception of impropriety, that's very broad. And when it comes down to whether or not someone on council has a say in a decision that may or may not be crucial, or, you know, without knowing the level of importance, it just seems like, would we, if this were to have come up before the next vote, that someone is saying that I have a conflict of interest, perceived conflict of interest, would we then table that vote while there was some, and I don't believe I have one in this instance. Would we then table that vote, and there would be an investigation?
You could review the matter in real time. You don't have to table the matter. It was, the way that that may come up is if someone raises the issue. If you review the matter at the time and give a response, you could proceed with the vote. It does not have to be tabled. If you, the council wanted to table the matter pending reviewing the conflict of interest, they could do so by motion and vote.
It, it just seems like there's a lot of leeway to, if there were to be an agenda by someone who had, the, the person who perceived a conflict of interest that would be aired publicly, whether or not they're, given there might not be merit to it. It's just the conversation itself is enough to pollute perception of somebody's interests or
The Ethics Commission had the, the Ethics Commission reviewed the issue and went through the document and made, made a recommendation, and there was a report at the last meeting about what the reason for that vote was. So I'm, I'm, apologize for not being the one that can answer that question as far as that goes.
Yeah.
Councilmember Parsley?
I just want to know who determines what the appearance, who determines that, if it appears of impropriety? Because there's too many backgrounds in here that any agenda item at any point could look like you should recuse yourself.
Ultimately, the appearance of impropriety is judged by the Ethics Commission if a complaint is brought.
Only if a complaint is brought.
Correct. Or each individual council member can review that issue for themselves and decide to recuse based on appearance of impropriety. So the first instance would be yourself saying, not, there's not a legal conflict, but I would, I think it's better if I just step back from this one, and here's why. So that's the first line of identifying it. Who decides? The second is if you have a fellow council member, citizen, raised the issue during the meeting, then, you know, there'd be some analysis and review of it. And the third is if someone feels there was a violation, then it would be, a complaint would be filed. And then the Ethics Commission reviews the issue based on the facts and circumstances and makes a determination and recommendation at council. Also, an ethics opinion could be requested from the Ethics Commission. That's another option.
Councilmember Floris Kail?
Thank you. I want everybody to remember the importance of, of perception because during the last council meeting, we talked a lot about what a moratorium would be perceived as from the people, and we were all very weary of what that perception would look like. So I think to make it applicable, we just need to be cautious, cautious and conscious of, of perception. My overall question would be, why would we differ as a council from what state law requires? I think having a solid ethics policy is going to essentially be what kind of comes down to the council and to the staff and creates an ethical staff and leadership. So I, for me, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me because I feel like if this ever became an issue, I could deal with it on my own. I can understand maybe not everybody feels that way. But I, it's, it's been in here for this long, and I don't think it's really caused any issues. Though, you know, I think the one time that it was brought up, that came back and it was dealt with. Additionally, I'm not sure who brought up to strike this because that was all done in executive session. So even though it came collectively to us, it was not, we don't know who brought that up. I don't know if the attorney brought that up. I don't know if it was I don't know if it was, overall, everybody said yes, or if it was a majority. And, and that also kind of makes me a little bit uncomfortable as well. So my, my vote would be just keep it in.
Okay. Well, we, we took a vote on this exact item, had this exact discussion at the last meeting. So it was explained at that time that the, the commission, the Ethics Commission, did not want to make determinations based solely on the appearance of impropriety, and they also did not want to consider complaints, which we have had. So certainly, that language allows for people to make more loose complaints and bring formal charges against folks on more, you know, loose complaints. But we discussed this at length, so I think we should take a vote, and I'll call a roll call vote.
Can you repeat what we're voting on exactly, leaving it or?
The motion is to, is the same as the last motion, which is the Ethics Commission recommended to strike it. It was, it was, it was motioned to put it back in. That motion and vote failed at the last meeting, and now we're doing it again.
Floris Cale?
Yes.
Parsley?
Nay.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Nay.
Heiser?
No.
Tobias?
Nay.
Bradshaw?
Nay.
All right. Motion fails five to two. I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Is there discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion carries six to one. Next up is Agenda Item Number Nine, a resolution setting a public hearing under Section 311.003 of the Texas Tax Code for the creation of Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone with the corporate limits of the City of, within the corporate limits of the City of Kyle, Texas, authorizing the issuance of notice by the City Secretary, arranging for public hearings and to direct staff to prepare a reinvestment zone preliminary project and financing plan. Ms. Libby.
Good afternoon or good evening. Mayor, Councilmember Stephanie Libby with Norton Rose Fulbright, our firm services bond counsel to the city. What you have before you is a resolution that would set a public hearing for creation of a tax increment and reinvestment zone related to the Limestone Creek development. A similar resolution was adopted by council earlier in 2022, and there were subsequent meetings at which public hearings were held related to this at the city council's last meeting. That public hearing was opened and closed at the request of the developers so that we could restart this process. In the original resolution adopted by council, we had both the meets and bounds for two separate parcels of land within the contemplated zone attached to the meets and bounds, but we did not have, or attached to the resolution, but we did not have a comprehensive map that showed the zone in its totality. And it was the developer's desire that we restart the process so that when notice was published and, and consideration of the zone was taken by council, that the zone in its entirety was laid out. And so that's been done through this resolution. By the resolution, the public hearing would be set for December 7th, City Council meeting. Happy to answer any questions that you all may have related to the resolution.
Thank you, Stephanie. Does anyone have any questions regarding this item? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Council, Mayor Protem Tobias. Is there discussion on the motion?
I have a question.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Stephanie, where, where is the location for this? Are, we're talking about a location?
For the meets and bounds?
Yes.
And the exhibit behind the resolution? You should have meets and bounds proper description and then also map that shows the zone.
Right. So where is the zone? That's what I'm saying, in the city, where is the zone that we're, for this?
It's on the east side.
Limestone Creek.
Limestone Creek, which is?
By Quell Ridge, just on the north side of Quell Ridge.
Because it's missing Limestone Creek here.
Right.
I've seen it in public hearing, agenda items. Okay. That's what I was asking for.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion carries six to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Agenda Item Number 10, Consideration of Amendments to the City's Alcohol Sale Permit and License Applications and Annual Fees Pursuant to Maximum Permitted Fees established by TABC. Ms. Sands.
Mayor and Councilwoman Sands, City Attorney for the Record, I'm the, I'm the face of this item, but I may ask for some assistance as we discuss. The, the city has an ordinance that talks about collecting a fee related to certain permits and licenses that are, that are required by the TABC related to selling alcoholic beverages and, but there's not a specific fee attached, a specific fee adopted, and the city does not currently collect those fees. So the question for council is, does council wish to enact those specific fees and to begin collecting those when people come to the city to renew their permits related to alcohol beverage sales?
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Sands? Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. I guess my question is, why haven't we been doing this? I feel like they used to do this, and then it maybe stopped, but-
I will have to defer to some assistance to answer that question.
Jennifer Kirkland for the record. My understanding, so once I became City Secretary, our former City Secretary said that we did not charge those fees, but it's been on the books, and even in looking back, I relied on Pervez. He told me that, back in the past, that there was some council discussion about not charging that fee because it was, the, the people who sell alcohol in the city felt that they were being double-charged to have to pay state fees and then also city fees. And so the council at that time decided not to charge those fees, but it's still on our code of ordinances that we have the ability to charge.
Do we, do we know if Buda and San Marcos charges these? Because I think the fee is half the fee of the state, right?
Correct.
And so do we know if Buda and San Marcos charge?
I do not have that information.
I don't either.
Okay. I mean, I'd be glad to do it, but, man, we're going to make some business owners pretty upset. Can we, can we find out if the other cities do it? It would make me feel a little bit better knowing that we're, we're the ones that are out of whack and not imposing this.
And I have a quick question. So this will be for new permits, correct?
They have to renew their permits every two years, I believe.
Okay.
Maybe every year, but definitely every two years. And when they come in, when they come in to renew, that's when they would be charged the fee by the city.
So I would think that what Councilmember Floris Cale is saying makes sense, and if we are not going to do it, then we just need to change the ordinance and switch that out of, just cross it. So we're not just not doing something that we're supposed to be doing.
Correct.
So if we can bring this back maybe for the next meeting?
With the information about what the other cities are doing, and then you all can give direction. Yes. Okay.
Councilmember, Mayor Protem Tobias.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this and for further information on other cities.
All right. Motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Floris Cale. Is there discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. Next up is Agenda Item Number 11, a resolution of the City of Kyle, Texas, determining the cost of certain authorized improvements to be financed within improvement area number four and the remainder of the Six Creeks Public Improvement District, et cetera. It's a lot to read. And then Agenda Item 12 is also for John. Do you want me to bring them up together so you can present them together?
That's fine.
Okay. And then Agenda Item Number 12 is a resolution approving the form and authorizing the distribution of a preliminary limited offering memorandum related to Series 2023 Bonds in Six Creeks. Mr. Snyder, go ahead on 11 and 12.
Mayor, Council, John Snyder with P3 Works for the City's PIT Administrator for the record. So what you have before you is a preliminary service and assessment plan. This is the fourth improvement area, so we've already got improvement area one, two, and three. This is improvement area four. Within Six Creeks, it's Section 6, 7, 12, and 13 is what comprises this improvement area number four, and we're looking at levying $17,883,000 in assessments on improvement area number four. There's also a little over $3 million that's being levied on what we're calling the remainder area, which is basically everything outside of improvement areas one through four. And that's more of a, a legal issue that Stephanie's brought up, that she's thinking we need to have an assessment on that land for some major improvements, and then ultimately it'll be kind of refunded out with, with future assessment levies as we get to improvement area five and six. But we are putting that assessment down at this point. That's all owned by the developer. This is just the preliminary plan, so you're not actually levying assessments. You'd be doing that at your next meeting on the 17th. We'd be coming back with updated numbers based on final pricing, and that's, what the next two documents are, we have the preliminary limited offering memorandum for both improvement area two B bonds as well as improvement area four. Improvement area two, if you remember, was broken into an A bond, which has already been issued. There was a trailing reimbursement agreement. We're coming back and issuing those bonds now. And then improvement area four is just going to be a single bond issue, and it'd be for the full $17.8 million.
And that covers Items 11 and 12?
Yes, sir.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Snyder? Councilmember Parsley.
So what are kind of like the scope of the improvements we're looking to do into Area Four?
Improvement Area Four, it's all the internal improvements. So there were some major improvements that were done upfront, so they're paying for their allocable share, but that was determined years ago when, in the original draft of the SAP. And then everything else is specific to phases six, seven, 12, and 13.
And are we going to have in the next meeting what, like, that's going to look like? Like?
What do you mean by?
Well, when we talk about cost of certain authorized improvements, I just wanted to know what kind of-
Oh, sure, sure, sure. So we got, this document's a couple hundred pages long.
Yeah, I was trying to look at the Section Four to see-
Yeah, there's, let me point you to the correct zone. So if you go to Exhibit A, and again, it's, it's on page 54 of the, of the SAP. That shows the improvements for improvement area one, two, and three. It continues on to page 55, and that's where improvement area four, all the improvements are broken down. It's primarily, it's, it's streets, water, wastewater, drainage, and detention for each of the improvements, or for each of the phases. And properties within Phase Six are paying for the Phase Six, Phase Seven's paying for Phase Seven, so there's no, there's no overlap. Everybody's distinct because the phases aren't contiguous, it's not contiguous, right? There's, there's Phase Six down here and Phase 13 all the way up here, so we make sure everybody's just paying for the improvements that are, they're receiving benefit from.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Floris Cale.
I just want to say thank you for answering my email. I looked at the backup, and it was overwhelming, and so I do appreciate you just kind of reassuring. So, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Items 11 and 12.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Floris Cale, seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Is there discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Our motion carries six, six to zero. Thank you, John.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next up is Agenda Item Number 13, Consideration of Possible Action to Authorize the Interim City Manager to Execute a Change Order that Removes $325,000 from the Escalation Allowance of the Bartlett-Cock GMP Construction Contract and to Utilize These Funds to Fund Additional Items Needed to Complete the Public Safety Center Project as Presented to the City Council on December 6th. And then I was also going to go ahead and bring up Agenda Item 14 as well, Consideration of Possible Action to Authorize the Interim City Manager to Cancel and Rescind the Purchase Order Awarded by the City to Smart Charge America in an Amount Not to Exceed $26,500 and to Utilize Those Funds for Other Public Safety Center Project Needs as Presented on December 6, 2022. Mr. Burd?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Derek Burd with AGCM, Project Manager. So the first item is a change order deducting $325,000 from the GMP contract with Bartlett-Cock. That will then free up that money to utilize for the additional expenditures that we presented at the December 6th meeting in order to cover the shortfalls with the additional emergency operations center and the dispatch center that are going in the Public Safety Building. The second item, I apologize for not putting some backup with that, but back in January 18th of 2022, council approved a purchase order of Smart Charge America to install electric vehicle charging stations at the Public Safety Building. On May 3rd of the year, they then issued an RFQ to fund a sole source for all city buildings for smart charge, electric vehicles. And then on September 6th, a project, Savannah, was brought forth. No action was taken at that. I don't know where that stands, but what it looks like to us is that there are two separate paths being taken in order to fund and put the electrical charging stations at the Public Safety Building, because the one that will go at all city buildings will be less expensive than doing piece by piece. We feel we can pull the PO that was issued back in January, and again, utilize those funds for other items that we're still needing at the Public Safety Building.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Burd? Councilmember Floris Cale.
Oh, thank you. So can we confirm that this $26,000 is going to be, was voted on? Because I really would like to see, make sure that we have those charge stations in the police department.
So the PO was voted on back on January 18th with Smart Charge America of 2022. The RFQ that was sent out May 3rd and then the subsequent action that was postponed on September 6th, I don't know where that stands, if anything is taking place. The September 6th meeting, there was a lot of discussion about having these from this other vendor for the Public Safety Building, having multiple different types, not being proprietary through Tesla, having some fast charging stations there. I don't know what the scope of that is, but that was a secondary track that was being taken by the city in addition to what was there, and there's not need for duplicate.
Okay. I'm looking at you, Perez. I just want to make sure we kind of house clean before we move forward with this vote to make sure everything's in order so there's no confusion. If we need to go back and, and make a vote to go a different route, I think that's, that's important for us to do, to be consistent.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. For the record, I'm Pervez Mahid, City's Director of Finance. The recommendation that AGCM is making on Agenda Item Number 14, it basically removes the contractor from providing the connectivity. It is not the actual installation of the charging station, because that's more expensive. Is that correct?
The Bartlett-Cock is still providing conduits to the locations for the charging stations.
Okay.
This is the actual stations themselves.
We don't have any city electric vehicles for the police department, nor do we plan to have in the next couple of years. So if the city embarks on a citywide charging option, that would truly be more economical, and at that point, we can add the Public Safety Center project to it if we go in that I think it's a wise move, what they are recommending. It frees up $26,500 to be applied towards other remaining items to complete the project. Staff as well supports this item for, and recommends to council that it be removed. So I don't know if I answered your question, council member.
I just want to make sure we're not going to have just, like, charging stations with no electricity. I just want to make sure that it's all squared away and taken care of. Do we need to take a vote to say we're not going to go that route, or we're not going to use that contract?
If you vote on this item, it will be removed.
Okay. All right. Clear as mud. Thank you.
Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you. So if we were to eventually need some charging stations, will we need to just go ahead, come back, and do an amendment or budget in order to fund those?
Yes. At that time, council will have to make a decision if you want to add a charging station at the Public Safety Center.
Okay.
And how that will be paid for.
So since when we did the last vote about approving the $677,000, that will bring us to 650, since we are deducting the $26,000 that we had allocated for this?
I believe that $26,000 was already allocated when we were figuring out our balance.
Oh, was that already? Okay.
And we're now just coming back doing housekeeping.
Okay.
In order to approve these items.
When we made the vote to approve the 677, since now we are going to be getting those 26 back, then we won't be able to, I mean, it will be less than money that we had to budget additional, that amendment.
So when that list was prepared, the list of additional items, that determined the amount of gap, funding gap?
Okay.
The $1 million, $1,2022. When that list was prepared, $26,500 was already assumed would be available.
Okay.
So it was net of that.
I get it.
So now, we're just, we're now just doing the housekeeping to clean up all of these items.
I get it. I'm sorry. Thank you.
You did say that it'd still be sleeved, right? Fourth. Okay. Mayor Protem.
Okay. I'm in favor of both of these right here, but I need councils to start looking in the future. A lot of my coworkers laugh at me because I listen to old man radio, AM channels, and they do have, they did a segment the other morning about electrical vehicles in the future that they are going to be a lot more in the next five to ten years. And it's just the the trend that's coming. And so even though right now we're going to say no to this, and and we're going to say not at this time, there's going to be vehicles that other counties and other cities that are going to be using electrical vehicles, and as they visit our Public Safety Center, they will need to have charging stations. Okay, it's something that we need to start thinking later in the future. We may say no to it now because maybe we need to use these funds for something else to pay for something else. But we need to really start thinking collectively and looking long term that technology is catching up to us, not only that, but also the wave of the way new vehicles are coming around. And so we we need to be aware of that and and also have the space available. Let's say we say no to this, sir, but will the the there be space available to where we need to install these, where we don't have to do any kind of major change orders to install these these amenities?
The infrastructure to the locations that there are existing is still going to be there. It's just not actually installing the charging stations.
Okay.
And I apologize because when I was looking through the agendas, the September third meeting brought forth a vendor for all city buildings have charging stations installed. It wasn't until I watched the video, saw that that was postponed to the next one. I could never find a continuation on that. So I don't know where that citywide vendor search stands at this point. But I do know it's something that you're looking for. It is a city, but it's a vendor away from the smart charge.
Yes, and I think that's that's a good point. So so going forward, us as a council, we need to start keeping that in mind that any new facilities that we have, whether it's a library or the Public Safety Center in the new future, we're going to be needing these type of charging stations for visitors or just city officials, because we may eventually start going that way with electrical vehicles in the near future. Thank you.
Councilmember Heiser. Just real quick, and sorry if I missed this. How many charging stations does does the twenty-six thousand five hundred buy?
That's a great question.
Okay.
I was not here at that time when this was originally proposed.
Chief?
I think I recall. Mayor Council Jeff Barnett, chief of police, for the record. So they stated it very clearly incorrectly that this was the early company that the city thought they might move forward with, the Smart Charge Company, so that's why they were selected to put the power stations at the new police facility. At some point thereafter, after we engaged this purchase order, the city decided that they were going to look at a much broader scope and maybe look for services that could be provided throughout the community from one vendor rather than having multiple city-owned vendors throughout different city departments. At that time, Smart Charge was put on hold, and you're right, they're just cleaning, doing the housekeeping for that directive back in the past. I believe that this was going to fund two stations in the secured area and two stations in the front of the facility. So I believe it was, each station can provide two stalls, so I think you were going to get a total of four stalls each to the front, which means to the citizens who wanted to come in and park their citizens' cars, and then two stations in the back, if I recall correctly. It was either two, I'm sorry, it was either one or two, but but that's kind of, it was a small number.
If I may, I have it right here. It's one charge point, two charge points, CPF fifty, five-time installations, six parking blocks, six safety ballers, SCA pole mounted, annual wireless cloud, one-time charge point activation fee, and shipping. This is scope of work. I can send it to you.
And they're right, the power is, the power to these future stations will still be in place by our current contractor. That's going to take place anyway. It's simply the charging station that you'll see, kind of like the pump that you'll see above ground, until the city decides on which vendor you want to use for all city facilities and elsewhere throughout the city.
Conceptually, are we all in agreement that this is something when the time comes that the department should have?
Yes.
Yes, because if we're going to give the money away now, I just want to make sure that we're willing to give it back when the time comes.
Yes, and that's that's the whole idea of getting council now to start looking. Like, right now, this will be just to get the money back to help finish projects here. But as we go forward, we are going to need to look at city of city vehicles and also at the Public Safety Center. If somebody is trying to reach us or come to the police station, they need to be able to refuel or however you look at it. I don't know what the term is.
Recharge.
I don't have a Tesla.
Recharged.
Recharge, I'm sorry. We just start looking, looking at that in in the future that we're going to need to going to eventually have to make that hard investment.
Yes, sir. And there was never any doubt that 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 we believed that future's coming. It was more about the selection of a vendor that the city approved for all of its facilities and elsewhere in the city.
So it's a bad deal?
That that particular company, just as I was told, was just not the company that the city wanted to move forward with for that larger scope project.
Councilmember Bradshaw.
I was just going to say, no, I'm not on board with it. I think it's like putting a gas pump at the police station or anywhere else, and that's just crazy. I would much rather leave it in the private sector and let them deal with it, because they're popping up all over the place anyways, just to answer your question. But that is definitely a conversation that we can have when this comes back.
So the the locations where they, where the conduits being run, is it to public parking spaces in the front? Or is this to the back?
There would be one that would be in the front that would service two stalls, two parking stalls, and then in the back behind the secured parking for police vehicles, any city-owned vehicles or whatnot. That was going to be two stations that would serve two spaces each, so four cars could technically charge at a time. The city, I can tell you from visiting with Smart Charge, what they do is they let the city set their own charge rates for the service that you provide to the community, and I have no idea what rates are to recharge a car. But that is something that the city could basically set up a payment option for citizens who came to the front of the PD while perhaps visiting the PD, could charge their car, and the city would determine the amount of funds necessary to charge their car, what rate, how long, that kind of stuff.
Councilmember Floris Kael.
I do appreciate it being at the police department, because it takes a little bit longer. It's not like pumping your gas, so it kind of gives people a safe place to recharge. But with that said, my question for Perez, just to clarify, I feel like I'm kind of beating a dead horse. So it looks like we approved the one million, two thousand, two dollars. Of that, three hundred and twenty-five thousand was a drawdown, and so we needed to do the six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two dollars. So that's an explanation of all of that. Where is this twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars going to be allotted to?
So overall, the Public Safety Center project, when we were reconciling what remains to be funded, what can be funded with existing dollars, the twenty-six five hundred was already identified early on as available, so we did not add it to the million-dollar list.
So really, what you guys needed?
Was twenty-five thousand, six hundred more.
Right, but for a total of one million, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and two, instead of what you showed us, which was the one million, two thousand, two dollars. So I I need, if this is going to be brought back, I need to have that amount total before. So now we're not having this long conversation, because if we have to, if we have to approve it.
This won't be coming back anytime soon.
No, no, but it's coming back now, right?
Yeah.
And this this twenty-six five hundred wasn't in this list. So we didn't know we had to borrow. We, I didn't know we were going to have to approve this today until I got the agenda. I didn't realize we were off by another twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars. That's all I'm saying. So it's it's hard for me to just keep saying yes. Even though you guys had already budgeted for this, it wasn't approved. Council did not say, yes, this is the way we want to go. And so now for me, this is another twenty-six thousand dollars added to this. And and can you give me the amount that we've currently spent on this Public Safety Center?
I don't have it with me tonight.
All right, if you could email it to me, I would.
I will certainly do that tomorrow.
Okay, I just feel like this this gotten so out of control with, you know, we got to make sure as a city, if we bond out an item, that we stay within that budget. It's so, it's so important in order to have the trust of the residents when we do bonds, to make sure that we're not going over. No, I get it, there's going to be some overages.
No, I would like to clarify something, and I hope it's not my meds talking.
Or let it.
This project would have come within the bonded amount had it not been for the additional scope that was added by council, which was to bring back the dispatch to this facility. That was never intended in the original thirty-seven million dollar project. So had it not been for that, this project would have been completed within the thirty-seven million dollar.
So how much was it to bring back that dispatch? Because right now, we're still looking at a difference of, you know, maybe four hundred thousand dollars. We don't know how much it's going to cost to move it. So say we take out, what was it, five hundred thousand dollars? Right?
Five hundred thousand.
Okay, we're still looking at an overage of five hundred thousand dollars.
There's more than that. That's just five hundred thousand. You got the dispatch chairs, dispatch equipment. You've got the consoles. They're all additional items. It's on the list.
Oh, no, I'm looking at it. I just feel like there's other things that we could have done, like without a chairlift, that we could have done as well. And I'm not saying this, that's on you. What I'm saying is collectively, we need to make sure we know what we're voting on, so we don't run into a place where we need these items, and now we have to figure out ways to fill in. That's not fair for staff. That's not fair for the police department. It's not fair for ACGM. That's all I'm saying. So now that this is coming back, and I'm like, okay, now there was twenty-six thousand in there that we are having to approve. It it just throws me off.
I understand.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Mayor Protem.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and approve items number thirteen and fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem, second about Councilmember Bradshaw, that we approved agenda items thirteen, fourteen. Is there?
I just wanted to.
Councilmember Parsley, that we approved agenda items thirteen and fourteen. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilmember Zuniga.
So just just for, to get my mind, my mind clear. The twenty-six thousand was already approved, which is, this is just for the change of the purchase order, right?
This is canceling that purchase order, the twenty-six thousand five hundred, freeing those funds up to be utilized for other items.
But they were already approved.
All within the bond funds.
Nothing in this is a budget increase. We're not expending new funds. So the the vote to expend the funds would be a no vote.
The votes to expend the funds happened back in December. Now that that's happened, we're bringing in the housekeeping items, doing everything up.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is Agenda Item Number Fifteen, discussion of possible action to amend the policy on appointments for city boards, committees, and commissions. At the last meeting, we discussed the policy that we wanted to bring back, and that policy was included in the backup. I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at it. There was, it's consistent with the direction that we gave to bring back. I do have one item that I wanted to propose that we change, because I think that it won't work with this policy very well. And that is what was originally point number six. It's now point number five. It basically just says that in those instances where multiple interviewees exhibit virtues, if you want, somebody applies for a board and they are interviewed, and the panel likes them but has to choose, the policy as written basically says that the panel should try to fit that person into another board or commission. But because we're having so many different interview and very official interview panels, it made sense to me to just take that point out, understanding that if you apply for a board and interview, you can, you will always be able to apply for multiple boards, but you won't be automatically put into any front seat because you applied for Parks Board, for example, and it was, you know, you want to apply down the road for a different position. You'd have to reapply. So my suggestion was going to be to take that point out in its entirely. But everything else is pretty consistent with what we discussed at the last meeting. Is there discussion on that recommendation? All right, I'd like to make a motion to eliminate eliminate point number five under the policy that is in the backup that starts with the language in those instances that multiple interviewees exhibit the virtues, et cetera.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, second about Mayor Protem. Is there discussion on that motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Our motion carries six to zero. Is there discussion on the ordinance as written? Councilmember Floris Kael.
Thank you. I have a few things I just want to touch on. And thank you for doing this. I feel really bad, because I know we've had staff spend quite a bit of time creating the other one, and now we're changing again. So my apologies. Number one, it says, "An official job description for the vacant position on the board or commission will be created." Is there any way that we can put in there by who?
Did you have a suggestion?
I was hoping staff would be comfortable if they know, like, you know, staff has, I think, a good direction, or maybe the chair, or maybe the board.
Well, I think the staff associated with the department is the one who would do it anyway, so it wouldn't be adding work to them.
Okay, yeah.
Do you want to add that?
Yeah, if we can add that, please.
You want to make a motion? Let's just stick with it. Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add to number one, "Will be created by the staff in charge of that committee."
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Floris Kael, second about Mayor Protem Tobias. Is there discussion on that motion to amend? All's in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, and then the next one that kind of is, I think, is vague, is the last sentence. "The city may take additional measures it determines necessary to ensure there is a sufficient awareness of an appointment opportunity." Can can you kind of explain that to me?
Which point are you looking at? Oh, same, same section.
Same sentence, yeah. "The city may take any additional measures it determines necessary to ensure there is sufficient awareness of an appointment opportunity." I guess I don't really understand.
So I would say earlier, it references, sorry, Amber Lewis, Assistant City Manager, for the record. Earlier, it references that the, it will be created and posted to the city's website under the volunteer applications page. And so additional measures as it determines necessary, I guess, would depend on the the little interview panel. We could talk about the newspaper. We could talk about LinkedIn. So those are kind of the hot topics. Facebook, Rachel would be pulled in as well to talk about different venues. So I guess it's leaving it vague enough where whatever comes up in the future, whatever social media platform becomes available to you, then you all could use that platform to advertise.
So could we change that to read, "Posted to the city's website under the volunteer applications page and any additional," just take out "the city may take" and just put "and any additional measures it determines necessary"? And you could probably even strike out, "To ensure there's a sufficient awareness of appointment opportunity." You could just do any "it determines necessary," period.
That would work.
Okay, I'd like to.
It would read, "An official job description for the vacant position of the board or commission will be created and posted to the city's website under the volunteer applications page, and any additional measures," well, and the city may take, well, okay, so how are you?
Yeah, no, you're good.
And any additional measures.
And any additional measures it determines necessary.
Right. Okay, so it will be created and posted to the city's website under the volunteer application page. It's just the sentence become run on.
Maybe we can do and or or, well.
It's basically, it's saying the same thing. I don't know that we're changing the meaning much, but it is trying to reduce the sentence structure.
Yeah, I just feel like it's really long. Okay.
I don't like, it's very choppy, just, just to start another sentence with "the city may take any additional measures."
Yeah, volunteer applications page or any additional measures.
I don't want to do grammar, I don't want to do grammar-proofing up here, but I just thought it was choppy.
So if it reads, "Volunteer applications page or any additional measures it determines necessary."
Or additional social media platforms or communication methods. I don't know.
I was just trying to shorten it.
Measures could also mean word of mouth. It could mean door hangers.
Right, so the first sentence is related to the job description posting. The second sentence is related to promotion of it. So they are two different subjects, which would mean two different sentences, so.
Okay, it's up to you guys. I just thought it was really choppy, and that's okay.
I see where, yeah, I like how you're defining that. So the first sentence could be created by the staff. We'll we'll word it, something like that the staff responsible for that border commission will will create it, period. And then we would go on to discuss how that is advertised. It will be posted to the city's website under volunteer applications page and any additional measures it determines necessary to make the application available.
Yeah, I think to keep it vague, you could just end it as necessary, and in that way, you don't limit yourself.
Okay, so. Okay, so that we will limit the first sentence to just talking about the job description, basically. And then the second sentence will address where we advertise it.
Perfect.
And how we advertise it.
Yes.
I like it, okay.
And don't limit yourself.
I think we got it.
Okay, okay, so number three. Okay, so number three, there's two things I'd like to see. For transparency reasons, I would like to add that, and if everybody's amenable to this, that councils should receive a list of applicant names. Somewhere, somewhere in there. So even though you guys are picking out and, and providing them to us, I still think I'd like to see a list of names. And then at the end, if you, it says, "And applicant pools are insufficient and reopen the application or otherwise extend the deadline to allow time for more citizens to apply." Somewhere in there, I would like it if you guys notified council that, that you guys did not find a good list of applicants or nobody qualified. Just so notification of council somewhere in there. And then just one more thing, number six. In the last one we had, we also talked about attendance. But what we put is, "Attendance is suggested but not required." Today, I felt like was a good example of, you know, there was a lot of questions that some of us had. And, you know, not everybody is, is me. And so I understand that's not a requirement to be here. But just to give them the opportunity to talk to us and answer questions, that way everyone could hear. If everybody's okay with that, you know, just to put that attendance is suggested but not required.
Is that not, that's, it's in the changes?
It just says nominate, nominees may attend but are not required. But I like the idea of being suggested, like.
Encouraged to attend?
There you go, yeah, even better.
Nominees are encouraged to attend but not required?
Yes, well, if everybody's okay with that. I would like to think that we would all like to talk to these applicants.
Well, the applications in the nomination, well, when a nomination is put forward, there is an opportunity for a phone call. Because their contact information is, is put forward in the backup material as well. So the nominate confirm process is not supposed to be in a secondary interview. So the reason, in my opinion, that we should not, that we should make it clear that attendance is not mandatory is because the interview process, the public interview process, is not something that I think, I think we should be clear on that. But we've been kind of a divided council. Some of us have used this process to take a nominee, which has already been vetted, and re-interview them. And so for myself, I don't think we should do that. But we can, we need to be clear. If we want to make it mandatory, if we're going to be taking votes that way, or based on attendance, regardless of whether we've spoken to them for thirty minutes or not. It doesn't even matter, but to me, that's arbitrary.
No, I agree. And I'm not, I'm not going to fight that. I just, I just, me personally, I like to see the person here and I like to talk to them. And I'd like to see how they interact, if they get up and speak. All that matters to me. It doesn't matter to everybody else. And that's why I just said it's suggested. And maybe, I don't know if the city doesn't want to suggest that, but also including that it's not required, so. If that's up to.
The city will do whatever is the will of the council.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion to include attendance is, what word, encouraged? I think that's the word to use, yeah, is encouraged but not required.
Second.
All right, it's a motion by Councilor Mayor Floris Kell, second about Mayor Protim Tobias, that we change, that we change the, the language that says nominees may attend but are not required to nominees are encouraged to attend but are not required. Is there discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Nay. All right, motion carries five to one. And then you said there were, there were some other ones?
No, that's it, that's it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Motion to approve?
I'd like to make.
All right, motion by Mayor, seconded by Mayor Protim. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, motion carries six to zero. So I think we have a new policy and we shouldn't have to bring that back at least for another six months.
You all laugh.
That'll last us till spring, at least.
That'll last us.
All right, next up is agenda item number sixteen, resolution of City of Calminging the rules of council. This is by, this is being proposed as was discussed last time. We postponed it because we wanted to get some legal questions. Does anybody have any items on the rule of questions that, the rules of council that they want to address? Councilor Mayor Parsley.
I have a couple of suggest, questions. Is there a particular reason why we have that the items need to be submitted prior to eight AM on Thursday? Can it be ten AM?
Yes.
Ten AM is fine.
I'm having coffee, but eight, having an idea and then I cannot present an item on Thursday. So I would like to request for it to be ten AM. I don't know if anybody else has any other suggestion about it.
Could we make it by noon?
Oh, that would be even better.
By noon.
Thursday, Thursday before.
I think noon would be okay, anything after that. Because sometimes agenda setting starts earlier than three. Sometimes it's two, but it's never before twelve. And that's really the only thing, is to make sure it's before the agenda setting.
Okay, do we, do would I need to make a motion to approve that?
Yes, hang on, let me pull it up so I can find it real quick.
Okay.
It's, I know, it's in the back.
It's under B, agenda.
If I may add, Mayor, it, it does, because if, if one of us is trying to rush through to get something, at least we have a timetable, a specific hour of the day that we, we can go by versus saying, hey, did I miss the deadline or whatever? If we say before noon, it would give also those who are coordinating the agenda item, knowing that at the cutoff at eleven fifty-nine AM, you know, that, that's all that's coming through. And then they can proceed from there. And then we know as council members that if we missed it, we missed it. We just have to wait till the next time.
Understood. Councilor Parsley, you want to make the motion?
Okay, yes, I would like to make a motion to make a change to the time by the, when we need to submit the agenda items from eight AM to noon, to noon.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Parsley, seconded by Councilor Floris Kell. Is there discussion on the motion?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
So it's a four-hour difference. So I'm just wondering from staff, was that, is this, was eight o'clock better? Because maybe y'all could be done with it that day a little sooner? I mean, was that?
It really doesn't matter.
Does it matter, Jerry? And I don't want to give staff extra work.
As long as it's here before agenda setting, it really doesn't matter.
Okay, that's fine. That's what I wanted to hear.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Do you have another one?
I think I, more than a change, because I was reading this as thoroughly as I could, is on, how are we enforcing this? Because there's a lot of the rules that I'm reading in here that are not being enforced. And I am guilty of some of them, like communication and texting and people with their phones in their hands, which is totally disrespectful. And I do have, you know, residents that complain about it. And one of the, the main ones that I have been reached out to is attendance during special meetings. There is, in here, we have special meetings that a lot of good discussion is happening in there. And we also, what happened the last time that we were appointing boards and commissions, we only had, we barely had a quorum. So I think that although we cannot change the charter yet, saying that the pay, you know, that we can, we hold some sort of payment of our monthly allowance. I do need to, I think it's necessary for us to start approving when a council member will not be present during special meetings too. I don't know if that's an amendment that we can do in here, but I think it's important that we address that.
I agree.
Well, so the, the way the charter says is that you can, you can remove someone, I think, by three meetings in a row? I'm trying to remember what the charter says. Three consecutive unexcused absences. Does it say regular? But we have a situation where like, you know, for example, we had two meetings tonight. So if someone wasn't able to be here, technically, there's two meetings. And oftentimes, that becomes the case. But it's been pretty well discussed at length when we created this. There was discussion about how do you tie council compensation to mandatory attendance? We had, we did have that one meeting with just the four out of six, because we only had a six-member, you know, council at that time. That's been pretty rare. I don't know that in my time, you know, attendance has been an issue. In fact, we've probably had the highest attendance record in the last year or two than before. Attendance used to be a real issue. We had council members that would miss forty, thirty to forty percent of regular meetings, multiples. And that doesn't really happen anymore.
So is it under the council agenda? It's on item number, point number five says, "While section three point oh six considers council attendance at all official call meetings, section three point zero nine shall only be calculated based on regular meetings," which means it's like the payment.
Correct.
You know, so I, I know that we cannot change that right now. But I do think that if somebody will be, if somebody will not be showing up in person to a meeting, that needs to be discussed ahead of time. It needs to be voted on, which is what we are supposed to be doing.
Right, but what happens when the city calls a meeting for next week's special meeting and someone just can't make it? And we're calling a meeting, how is that fair to the person who already had a conflict on their schedule to punish that person?
We, we know what we signed up for. You know, we all have to make sacrifices.
But what we signed up for by the charter is two meetings a month on the first and third Tuesday of every month. Special meetings that we decide to call, that's what we're deciding to do as a body. But it's hard to compel attendance to those meetings.
It is just rough because we call special meetings to discuss important things.
Right.
Like, you know, the budget workshops. I mean, we had a couple of very important special meetings. And if we don't have six, seven of us in here, it does create a burn on the city. And the decisions that are being made are not going to be the same.
Well, I agree with that, I do agree.
Okay.
Yeah, and to be fair, the charter doesn't discuss pay. So maybe if the charter did discuss, like, hey, you're going to get fifteen hundred dollars a month or whatever, then it might, they might have had a different mentality of like mandatory attendance. And so I do agree with what you're saying, but I don't think that the charter is up to date with our current circumstance of pay and expectations and credit cards and everything else, kind of, that we've, we've received over the last couple of years. So I think overall, I think it's important for us to be here because I do want to hear what everybody else has to say. I want to make sure everybody's opinion is kind of heard. Because I take, whether I seem like it or not, I take everybody's opinion to consideration when I make my vote and when I have these discussions. So I think it's important everybody's here.
Councilor Heiser.
Yeah, even on short notice, could we just try to schedule around? Like if we're doing next week, just try to do as best we can to try to accommodate everybody's schedules if it is on short notice. Or, and/or have there be, while we're on the topic of suggested, we suggest in the language that the person at least be available for the vote. If a vote needs to take place in one of these special meetings, if that's what the ultimate concern is, is having that majority, seven votes, cast on a, during a special meeting? Is that something that would?
I apologize, I'm sorry. It actually, number two says, except for the prior point, and consistent with section three point oh six, council absence at special meetings, workshop meetings, emergency meetings, and regular meetings shall only be excused by a majority of the vote of council. So.
Right, so if you're not there, if you're not there, it's unexcused.
Exactly.
Unless you're excused. And so we made it such that, as opposed to trying to buy special meetings, we tried to say, the charter says that you're compelled to be at the first and third meeting. It also compels related to unexcused absences. We put the compensation in that same category. It was all done at the same time. But we put that compensation in that same category so that it'd be clear that what, what the residents elected us to do was to make, was to attend the first and third regularly scheduled meetings. And because we went through a period where we, we were originally averaging, and Jennifer's discussed this. We were originally averaging, I don't know, like thirty meetings a year. And then the council got going. And now it's, it increased to like fifty meetings a year. So it's a, it's a lot. And to try to make sure that all seven people are always present at every meeting, special meeting, is challenging. But again, I haven't seen that we've had too much trouble with that.
I understand. I just, I know the rules are set. I don't think we are following, and I'd like to see that. That's all.
Understood.
I mean, you can always call a point of order.
Pile of ethics, go ahead. Mayor Protim.
Okay, I hear your point. And I'm just as busy as everybody else in this city. But I honestly do feel that we do make a big effort of trying to schedule special meetings with accommodating schedules, okay? Especially with this workshop, especially with the budget meeting on the twenty-first, you know, that's coming up on a Saturday. I think we do a good job by taking everybody's days in consideration on that end. We are going to maybe one day have an emergency meeting where we're going to have to meet out of the blue. And we're going to have to attend the meeting and so forth. But I think what I'm hearing you saying is that we all have to make an effort to attend the meetings because of either what's required of us as, as a dais, but also to the voters. But then again, I also look at it as, you know, if I decide to miss a meeting or two, then that's on me. And that's on me. And the only person that's going to be able to answer that, or I have to be held accountable in the long run, is the voters.
Correct.
Okay, it's going to be the voter saying, this guy doesn't show up, why should I vote for him again? We can hold each other accountable on that end, saying, I need you here for this vote because I really want to hear what you have to say. But it has to come from that council member, okay? So when it comes to if somebody has to be out, maybe we need to also just maybe consider or make a suggestion, who's going to be the point of contact to basically make that call to make the excused absence? Would that be the mayor? The Mayor Protim? Or something like that, to where it's like, Mayor, you were ill the other day and I covered for you. And didn't catch it off the bat, but you know, yes, we did give an excused absence. But again, I was, I was notified by you directly. Maybe we need to go that way. I hate to pinpoint to where, you know, go, go, go ask for approval or let somebody know. But in that sense, maybe there needs to be that point of contact. If Ms. Floris Kell's not feeling well, she contacts Travis directly and says, I'm out of town. I can't catch a flight or whatever the case is, I may not be there. Can I, would you please make, have an excused absence and so forth? And at least there, number one, it's documented. Number two, there's a reason why. And then it can be brought forward on a vote to make it all official on that end. That's my say on that. But if we are going to do any kind of changes or amendments, can I make a recommendation? Let's go to opening an item for discussion. I know this has been brought up many times. I brought it for other council members that are here. To initiate discussion, the mayor or chair shall introduce an agenda item, in most cases, reading, summarizing, so forth. After the mayor or chair has introduced the agenda item, then an item may be brought forward for discussion. Council members shall then adhere to the procedures defined in general discussion. A council member may not be recognized to speak or make motions or an item yet until it's properly introduced by the mayor. That includes raising your hand, and I know I've done this myself, I'm guilty of just speaking out. But when does it come to the point to where I have been, this has been brought up to me by several residents and family members, but mainly residents saying, you guys talk way too much. Way too much. This is a business meeting.
Right.
Why are we spending, why are you guys spending an hour and a half talking over the same thing over and over again? This guy's got something to say, this person's got something to say. Then this person's got something to say, this person's got something to say. I understand we want to get our voices, we have our questions. I guess for me, I do all my homework over the weekend so that way I'm ready to go come game day. But should we consider a timeline of each agenda item, no more than forty-five minutes for discussion? And then we can just go from there, if we need to amend the time and so forth, if it's, if it's that it.
Well, the good news is, we're not alone in that challenge. I think most cities struggle with completing meetings quickly. I've seen.
And it's, and it's a matter of staying on target. It's a matter of staying on point. If we're going to talk about one agenda file item for two hours, let's make it concrete. Let's make, let's make it worth the two hours.
So.
If we're going to make the agreement.
So there have been cities, Sam Marcos just recently tried to.
And again, this is a suggestion. Yeah, I'm sure it's going to get shot down.
Point of order is one very good way. I don't know if you're actually calling one or you're making a point. Yes, so.
I am trying to call a point of order.
And calling question is another good way, so. And calling question is another good way, so. What's your point of order?
Well, no, I was just saying him over talking you.
Actually, oh, okay. Well, that's true. And technically, you can't call a point of order unless you recognize the speaker. Maybe not.
No, no, point of order, you could just call out.
It's calling the question that you can't do.
Look, and there's, there's your solution. If we are tired of talking about an agenda item, you call the question.
Call the question.
We're not going to sit here and set timers for ourselves. We have issues that are way too important to make us limit each other for six minutes apiece so we can keep it to 45 minutes. I'm never going to do that. Now, if you don't like it, call, call the question. And then collectively as a council, then we can decide. But I don't think limiting ourselves to a time limit is the solution. I feel like there are lots of answers in these rules. We just got to follow them. And I think...
Well, so here's a great example. So I was clarifying with Mayor, Mayor Protim, and now you have the floor without being recognized. So it's, and now we're having a longer discussion. Right, but you weren't recognized and Mayor Protim had the floor. So I'm guilty of not being extremely hardcore on that all the time. Sometimes if we get out of turn, but I try to be friendly there, but I'm going to give Mayor Protim the floor back.
I have the floor.
I'm not in favor of time limits, but if you want to make a motion to, to try it. I am in favor of shorter meetings, though. I just don't think time limits themselves do it. All right, well, I'd like to make a motion to pass the rules of council as amended.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Forrest Kales. Their discussion on that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, motion carries, seven to zero. All right, next up is 17, considering possible action on a council policy procedure for incoming outgoing council members. Ms. Lewis.
Good evening, mayor and council. Amber Lewis, Assistant City Manager for the record. At the last meeting, we talked about a council onboarding and offboarding policy and procedure. And as we sat down to draft this, we realized that there are, there's a whole gamut of options that you all could decide to bring on as part of your policy procedure. So what we have done is we reached out to other cities. We asked for examples of how they do it. You have that in your backup. Georgetown has a complete guidebook. And they do a two to three month program with the department heads. And it, it takes them a long time to get through that. Some cities just have a checklist that they just, you know, check out equipment and make sure you get your email and make sure you, you sign your W-4 and, and all of that. The other thing is, is the offboarding policy can be as simple as a checklist as well. And so what I'm here tonight is to receive some direction from you all before I go down a path and we start writing a policy or procedure that may not fit what you want to see from us. I know that councilmembers in Nega and councilmember Heiser just received an onboarding from the department heads and, and the interim city manager and had that experience. And so that's what we do today. But open to feedback and direction and whatever y'all would like for us to bring back to you.
All right, thank you, Amber. I know this was, this was discussed, I believe, at the meeting that I was sick. I'm not really sure what the problem is that we're trying to solve, so I don't know how to give direction. I wish I'd been here at that meeting, ironically. But is there, is there, is there something in particular that we're trying to solve here? I haven't ever really seen any issues with onboarding or offboarding. There is some adjustments that are required and new councilmembers oftentimes have a lot of questions. And they get those questions answered over time. And sometimes it depends on how intense that council member is. Councilman Bradshaw.
Yeah, well, first of all, I would just like to say that the reason that I voted no to the initial motion is because this is a council initiative for a council policy. And I don't feel like it's staff's responsibility to create this policy. We should be coming up with this policy. But I will say that of anything that is important to put in a policy, if we were to create one for onboarding especially, it's definitely meeting with the department heads. I think that's very important. There's so much information. And if people aren't plugged in and paying very close attention, when they are elected in, they can come in and not know anything and then feel kind of firehosed trying to catch up at the meeting. So definitely doing something that incorporates giving background and knowledge on projects and different things that the city has going on within each department is, is very important.
It just is, that's what happens already. I don't know why we need a policy or how a policy would help. Councilor Forrest Kales.
Thank you. A, I didn't get any onboarding whatsoever. So the fact that I met with Scott Sellers and that was it leads me to believe that we do need a policy. I met with nobody else. And so I think there's things when we come on as a council that should be explained to us. And the city manager is a good point of contact. It's non-bias, it's non-political, and you know, it helps build that relationship. So the information that you sent us, I thought was amazing. It gives a checklist and makes it easy. It gives direction not only to us, but also to staff to figure out what it is that, you know, we need to provide to them. I think when I first started, I had no idea, like Mayor Mitchell kind of told me about that ethics nominee, but I didn't really have a good concept. I think me and Councilmember Bradshaw went back and forth, we're like, what is this? What do we do? Who do we pick? So having that direction, because even though we're elected, we're all new. I was super green and so I had no idea. This is not for anything more than to give guidance to council, which needs it, coming in and going out. And also, it also sets standards so staff isn't like, oh, great, do we need to collect this iPad? Do we need to get the credit card? When is it due? Like, when do we turn off this email? It just gives direction. Because when you're leaving, which all of us are going to eventually leave, it's imperative we know what that's going to look like. Not just for us, but also for staff. And it's actually to protect staff so they're not told one thing by one person and then something by another. This just gives direction. And I, I love policies because it sets out an expectation. And if we don't like that particular one, then we can change it. I, I loved the information that you sent. I did appreciate it. As somebody who did not receive onboarding, I would have appreciated this in the beginning as well.
I apologize that, that y'all did not receive onboarding. I can tell you that these two new councilmembers did. They got the opportunity to meet with the city manager, myself, several department heads, at least to the issues that we, we thought were important to y'all that you, you ran on the platform. And I'm going to try to summarize for Purves because he's kind of spoken about the, in the past. In the past, I, I think in Kyle, there used to be a whole day full of department heads presenting what they do. And some of the councilmembers said, no, 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 that's too long, we don't want to hear all that. So it slowly devolved back into, I think, just the city manager meeting with those new councilmembers. And with Jerry now in the seat, he has brought back that meeting with the department heads, you know, that kind of onboarding that I think you all deserve and want in your new roles and that we, we want you to have. But we're happy to put that on paper. I think, I think what we're doing is good now. We do have a checklist with IT as far as, you know, what kind of equipment you're issued. We make sure we get that equipment back. Everybody's been, to my knowledge, everybody's been compliant with returning their equipment. They know when to, and Marco can speak to some of those processes that he has. But they know when to turn off email, we know how to archive it, in compliance with records retention. But we are open to whatever else you would like to see.
Councilor Heiser.
Hi, I'm fully in favor of this. It's what my business does, is helping companies set expectations because a single person isn't scalable. Jennifer were to leave tomorrow, everything on these, like the new councilmember setup checklist, like that's institutional knowledge that she has. And if it's not documented somewhere, the person who comes in to replace her can't immediately pick up where she left off.
Absolutely.
So that would be in relationship to what's on these, like as much as applicable to, to us in this city, I would, you know, let's copy and paste. Let's make it as simple as possible because this is all very good. But additionally, like what, what I would like to see in terms of onboarding is like setting expectations. So when Miguel and I recently had to be up here for our first meetings, like there was limited knowledge that we had on a lot of the agenda items for which we had to vote. So I think anything we can do to try, you know, if it's as easy, if we can send a file of information to just kind of give background on what it is to make things better or, you know, help that councilmember be more acclimated and informed on those votes, I think it's a benefit to everybody.
And unfortunately for you, Councilmember Heiser, I believe there was less than a week turnaround. You were voted and then you were on the dais like in, in six days. And so it, it doesn't normally happen that way. I think it was just the way the calendar felt this particular time. But agreed, we could do better with making sure you have information in your inbox, you know, just bring you in the very next day and have you, have you get that information right away.
Yeah, I mean, it's, everyone was very, was willing to take the time to, to meet with me and help me understand a lot of the things that were on the agenda. So, you know, this is, if it hasn't come up till now, it's no one's fault, it's just something that's never gotten done. So I hope that we can make it a priority to, to try to do this over the short term here.
Councilor Forrest Kales.
Thank you. I just, my question is, is legally, is there things that we should be doing? Because as I think about this, one member's leaving and one member's coming, they're not sworn in, do they get this information? And I was just like, how does this work? How does, because I know like the commissioners, it's like clean break, January, whereas us, it's, there is, it's just like right away. And so I don't know if legally we're doing everything that we're supposed to as well or if there's some stuff that we can add legals into this information that would make things easier for us to understand. But we, I could use that guidance.
We follow the law on canvassing. I mean, there's canvassing laws and all that. We've done it the exact same way forever.
Page sign, city attorney for the record, the, the process where you are, become councilmembers and the steps you take to be, have the election canvassed, certified, sworn in, you, you follow all those requirements.
No, 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 so I guess my question would be, when, when do we legally set up that email? Because if you're not sworn in and then, or can we do it right away? Is there an overlap of an old councilmember that has information and the new council that has the information? Because the old council doesn't leave until they're sworn, the new is sworn in? So I guess I was just confused about that as well, just to give that direction to make sure that what we're doing is compliant.
I, I can confirm with staff what the steps are taken in the timing of that and confirm that that's compliant.
Okay, and I, because I guess I don't know what compliant is. And so I, I don't know, maybe I just, thank you.
Good evening, Councilmember Marco Forte, Director of IT for the city of Kyle. So I just want to explain a little bit of our process. So as soon as a member gets elected, we receive an email from Jennifer saying, this person got elected, it's going to start doing the preboarding process, really. That's creating the account, you know? And then she takes care of all the initial emails of what the requirements are and sends me the information of like, okay, this person, go and create the email, we'll create the email account. And I'll send it to her and then she'll forward it to whoever. At that point, we're already in the process of, of setting up the next council and I guess the unelected one, I guess. I don't know how to say it, but outgoing, there you go, outgoing. We're working through that process and the offboarding process as well. So as soon as the initial person is sworn in, we, that same day, we deactivate the old
Thank you.
Councilor Parshley.
Oh, I was just going to add that I think it's getting better from councilmember Flores-Kale to not have any. I kind of had some. But I do think that they will be something that should be set up. Like I had to request for my own meetings. I had to request to meet with economic development and I requested to meet with finance and stuff like that. So I do think it should be something set within the first week that the councilmember meets with the department heads, at least to get an idea of where we're sitting in regards to any, all of the projects or anything that is important to the city at that moment. Probably before the first meeting because I, it was just horrifying to sit down in here and I'm like, I don't know what they're talking about.
Absolutely. And to that point, maybe it's we go through, we set up the meetings and maybe those are after the council meeting. Maybe we set up a special meeting with the incoming councilmembers and go over the agenda, especially with them, so that we can give them the background so they know what they're voting on. I understand how unfair that would feel to be up at the dais trying to vote on something you know nothing about.
Councilor Heiser.
Why can't we canvass the results the next day? I mean, just the...
The state law, we follow, there's, there's very clear rules on how canvassing, and Jennifer can explain, yeah.
I was just going to mention that before we can canvass the, the county, they have a early voting ballot board that convenes to process all the provisional ballots and all those things. So we have to wait a minimum of, I think, six days.
Okay.
And so that's why sometimes the, the official results come in and there's a deadline to canvas as well. So we, it, it's just always a moving thing dependent on when the election takes place and when we get the results and when our regularly scheduled meetings are. That's, that's kind of, this time there was a super fast turnaround. It's not always like that.
Yeah. I mean, does the nondisclosure agreement that we sign, like almost immediately before the results are canvassed, does that, would that protect the city for enough so that the incoming councilmember before the results are canvassed can start to get up to speed on the upcoming agenda? If you have any idea?
We can look at that and just address the timing of it. There's just a lot of information. That form, oh, sorry. City Attorney for the record, we can work, I can work with the staff on the timing of that to make sure there's a good, that those issues are covered as far as when you have access to information and when it's appropriate about the information that you're receiving.
Another thought that I'm thinking about, especially in the instance of a runoff, we could call y'all both in at separate times and have that kind of onboarding, like pre-onboarding experience where we could go over recent agenda items with you and give you, you know, a little rundown of, of the different departments. And, and of course, we're always available to do that, but maybe we could make that part of the process and maybe we, you know, it would, might be a little overwhelming since there were six candidates for councilmember Zaniga's spot, that might be, or...
No, that was Bear's.
Oh, no, Bear's spot, sorry. Excuse me. That might be a little challenging for us to get to all six and, and maybe we divide it up. But that might also be an option where we kind of pre-onboard and that way y'all maybe feel a little more equipped when you hit the ground running.
If there's six days that needs to be wait, or that you need to wait before the results can be canvassed, I don't, I think that's perfect, that it's reasonable to wait until you know the outcome. Because then you have six days until, you know, that special meeting to certify the results.
You mean to start the educational process?
Yeah, so like you can find out, you don't have to bring in multiple candidates beforehand. Like I wouldn't want to, still, while I was running a campaign, come in and have all this downloaded on me. I mean, I, I deal with it, but yeah, I don't, it's not an optimal thing.
We're always looking for the opportunity to educate the public. So I mean, this is just one more opportunity.
And then just one more thing and then I'll shut up. In regards to outgoing councilmembers and emails being shut off, like instead of just straight up being shut off, can we have them forwarded to, to someone on staff? Just, I mean, everyone knows people don't participate in government. So there, good chance like half the town might not know that there's an election coming up in November for council seats and, and the mayor. So they might be reaching out to the person whom they think is their councilmember for God knows how long after someone goes in and someone goes out.
Yeah, definitely. So when we deactivated in county, we converted to a shared mailbox and we assigned the city manager to that shared mailbox who has access to that.
There you go. Councilor Parshley.
I was just going to ask if that's, I don't know if we want to give direction to staff to draft something with the, kind of the information we just gave. Would that be a motion?
You, you can make that motion, but that's the same as last time where we have a broad, wide discussion about concepts. And then we say, now staff, go do that, please. And staff doesn't know what to do, that's why they're back. So we've discussed like a few...
So we've discussed like a few key issues that we want to make sure are being taken care of. And the primary key issue is to make sure that when you're elected, you have access to staff, which has always been the policy. And in particular, that access needs to be managed through the city manager. Because the most important lesson you need to learn is that you don't have any employees. So you don't get to tell staff what to do. Uh, the city manager should be the one to coordinate the facilitation of all of those meetings. Uh, and that onboarding needs to be sort of structured in a certain way. But outside of that meeting, I don't know what policies we are trying to put together. Uh, but if, you know, we can memorialize what we already do, like the Open Meetings Act training and credit card compliance and putting together the email account and all, all of that stuff, but.
Like a checklist.
Right. But the, 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 there's like a two, what'd you say, there's one? So there's just a big variety of ways that staff could handle this. If, if the direction is to limit it to say, we want something to be clear about how you're gonna get your training and your onboarding, including a meeting, that's like a sentence or two that says, you will be given access to the city manager. The city manager can set up meetings with department heads. The other thing is like, if you get every department head in one room together with one newly elected council member, you're not gonna get very much done, cause each one's gonna go through. But maybe as an elected council member, you have a focus point and you're like, I'd really like to spend a lot of my time with the planning director or the parks director. There's freedom in that. And that's the freedom that not having a, a prescribed, this is how it must be done, has afforded. Because there are certain departments that I don't spend a lot of time interfacing with and others that I spend more time. And I think it's that way across the board. So I still don't know what they would go when, if we gave them directions, say, hey, go make that policy. What would they write down? I just don't know what they would know.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Yeah, and I kind of agree with the mayor. It's, it's hard to give staff, I always don't, I don't wanna give people extra things to do because I feel like I learned a lot from everybody up here, all of your great coaches. So I mean, it, we learn really fast, like what's going on. Um, and yeah, um, I don't know what we would tell y'all to do. I think the checklist is, is, is a nice idea. But I think the training that we've had amongst each other is really the experience that, that you gain really fast.
To Councilmember Bradshaw's point before, this kind of seems like a council issue and something we should be collaborating on with staff versus like a matter of public importance. Is this something that we can take offline with staff in a, like a special meeting? I don't know if we need to vote on something now, but if, um, is that possible? Is, is, uh, so we have action items to carry forth here? Instead of just blindly telling them, hey, like go do this thing and we'll judge your performance two weeks?
That's exactly what it is.
Yeah, I don't want-
It's a good question. I don't know, I don't know the answer. Councilmember Floris Kael.
Um, thank you. I, I like the two backups for sure that you gave us with the new council setup. Um, I think that is a great checklist and it dots the i's and crosses the t's. And I think that would be good for the city. As far as information from, um, from a council member perspective, that backup that you gave us that is really long is spot on. It tells what kind of city it is. Um, like some people get elected and don't know that there's a charter. They don't know, um, that what ordinance consists of. They don't know, they don't know the directors' names. They don't know how the directors are correlated. I mean, we used to get like these little circles with how the directors oversee these employees. Um, I think if we just kind of explained our city to the newly elected, it would make it easier for them to understand. The rules of council did not even get changed the first year I was elected. Um, and that was not because I didn't bring them up, but it didn't get changed. So that kind of stuff can be outlined, like the, the manual that you sent us, um, that covers, I think it's Georgetown. That information is priceless because we don't know what we don't know. So if maybe if we all did send to you guys, um, hey, this is what we didn't understand or, you know, when I was elected, I didn't, um, and, and I think me and council member Parsley talked about this prior too. There needs to be like a handbook to help people understand or, you know, newly elected, understand what this consists of, right? I'm sure even now, some people don't understand if we're a, a home rule city or if we're a council, a city manager led city. You know, some people just believe it's, you know, most cities are mayor led cities. So all that information being provided to that council member would be golden. That's something I would like to see put together. You know, if we feel the need to wanna do it ourselves, that's fine. If staff feels like they can handle that task, that's fine too. Um, but all that aside, I like the backups, these two checklists. I think it's great. I think it'll be consistent. And I think in the event Jennifer ever wants to go on vacation or leave or retire, um, she, we have this backup.
Not happening.
So I, I'd like to make a motion to at least approve these two, um, these two, which ones are these? The new city council member, let's see, setup and then the checklist.
All right, there's a motion to approve the new city council member setup and checklist. A motion made by Councilmember Floris Kael, seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Is there direction on the motion? So we're approving other people's check, I don't understand that at all.
Yeah, I wanna approve the city using this as our checklist as a beginning.
As a template.
Yes, as a template, there you go. And I can copy and paste it if, if I need to.
Uh, is there discussion on that motion? Councilmember Bradshaw.
Yeah, well, I, I actually really liked what you said about having the freedom to meet with the, each department heads. Because if we do put something like this into a policy, and I'm not saying that that's what the motion on the floor is right now, but if we consider this at some point, then we're going to be looking at, okay, you have a council, a newly elected council member who can't meet with a, all, every single department head within a matter of weeks or whatever, then they're violating policy because their schedules don't match up or something along those lines. So it almost seems like having that flexibility and leaving it outside of a policy, but definitely adapting some sort of checklist, like some sort of protocol should be put in place, I think is the way to go.
Uh, I, I actually just wanna add, this may sound like, I don't know what this is gonna sound like, but this is absolutely the truth for me. Uh, it's that I didn't, I did not rely on anyone to tell me what, uh, my job was or who the city manager was or department heads or anything. I spent time when I campaigned, making sure that by the time I was elected, I knew as much as I could, which was still virtually nothing compared to a year later. But at the same time, I, at no point did I ever think it's staff's job to tell me what I need to know. I, I think it's our job to tell, to, to learn for ourselves and ask questions, which, um, you know, we have some real good question askers here. So for someone to say that, you know, they're not being able to ask question, I, I don't, I don't really think that that's appropriate. Councilmember Heiser, you came in, and Zuniga both asking a ton of questions. But to try to memorialize that into some kind of policy, you know, we, we have councilmembers coming in from every different kind of background. And if you come in not knowing anything or that there's a charter, I don't know how you got elected in the first place, but it's, it's not, it's not the staff's job to, to walk you through and give you a full-on education on this is what our charter is and let's take it line by line and all that. So there's just some kind of balance there. Uh, wanting to have a policy is not the problem. It's just staff doesn't know what we're trying to get them to do. And what we can't be telling staff is, we need you to fulfill some critical role in our educational experience because we're the ones that are being elected and they have their own job. They, they are, you know, over other departments and other things. And this is a revolving carousel, you know, uh, up here. So I just don't know what to do.
Can I add something? It's just this checklist has basic stuff. It doesn't talk about meetings. So I think following this, like I had no idea if it wasn't for Ashley that I could get an iPad.
Right.
It, it's stuff like that. So if at least there's a checklist and like, um, council, new council member got their iPad checked. I, I, I didn't have to fill that. So if, if there is a checklist, like the one that we have right here seems pretty, pretty good setup. It's just, it talks about a cell phone request, which we don't have. So I guess things like that could be scratched off.
Yeah, all, all the things on this list I'm looking through are totally fine to, to add as an onboarding procedure. Um, Councilmember Floris Kael.
Yeah, no, okay. So I get what everybody's saying, no policy, I guess. But maybe we edit this to-
No, no, I wanna add to your, I wanna say, I, I'm in support of that. That's for staff. Let's, can we kick the can for like the council? It, you know, how we would advise new council members as us? We can talk about that during our envisioning workshop.
It certainly can be a conversation to take up.
Then let's do that, cause like I, I mean, I don't, I feel like we're all in agreement conceptually that like we want to help incoming council members be effective on day one. Um, and that's, staff does too. So let's, can we take a vote on what?
Yeah, is there, is there further discussion on the motion? All's favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero and to be continued at the visioning workshop. All right, agenda number 18, discussion of possible action regarding issues with damage to personal and city property caused by the current installation of buried utility lines to include, but not limited to, the requirement of potholing. Councilmember Floris Kael.
Thank you. Um, so over the last couple of months, we've had, um, utility companies come out and lay their lines, mostly internet. And, and as much as I am grateful for that, uh, they've caused quite a bit of damage to the cities, uh, to residents, to mine in particular, where I've lost my water, um, and my neighbor lost his water. Um, and they've hit a couple of gas lines. And so I'm coming up with trying to figure out what would be a good solution to minimizing, um, the, the opportunity to hit a line. Um, I came up, or I read about, um, potholing, which is literally, it's gonna take a little bit longer for the company. Um, but they go and they dig a hole and it kind of reassures them that there's no line underneath there. And I think they can do it and maybe in some agreements it might be in there. But I'd like to direct staff to like, find a way to put this in our ordinance. So since we're doing so much underground, uh, line burying right now, I think it's important for the future to kind of make it mandatory for anybody who is digging, um, to have to pothole first. I don't know if I said that right. I don't know, and you know what, can I get Harper up here?
Yeah, there we go.
Come on Harper, you, you have my words.
Harper Wilder, Public Works Director. Um, yes ma'am, the potholing is something that we've discussed in the past. So if a boring company, any one of the fiber companies comes in, typically they bore. Um, what we can do is require them to pothole ahead of time. So if there's line locates come out, they mark like you'll see that green or blue paint out there in the yards and stuff. Um, that's marking an existing line. So if they have to bore through that area, then they would be required to have to pothole, which is where you, a lot of times you hand dig up where that line is so that you can see it. You know the depth, um, how wide is it? Is there more than one line right there? And then, and then when they bore, you're, you're, you, you already know where it's at, so you shouldn't hit it. Uh, now that may still happen on occasion. If a bore hits a hard spot, a hard rock, uh, something that veers off course and they don't catch it quickly enough, they can still possibly damage a line. But you would save a lot of these accidents by making them pothole, uh, first. Now the, the, if you're gonna do an ordinance, I would also suggest that there be wording that, um, there should be wording that, because what they sometimes do, they'll see a line here and they'll pothole right where that mark is. And they say, there's nothing there. So they go ahead and they bore anyway. Um, there's usually gonna be a line in a certain footage. It may be in a few feet from that mark. Um, I think that we should have wording that requires them to pothole within a certain distance. Um, so that if it's not right there on that mark, you know, they have to go so much this way, so much this way and find it before they go through. Or we say that they have to alert us and we'll come out and give them approval. Okay, y'all go ahead. Something of that nature. I don't know how exactly we would make that wording, but something needs to be said that covers us. So they don't say, well, I, I did pothole, there was nothing there.
Is this something you think would be good?
I do, sir. I think it'd be a good benefit for all of us.
I think instead of, uh, creating an ordinance requiring the potholing, we just add it to our permit requirements. It'd be quicker and cleaner. Can we do that?
Yes, sir, we can. Does that, is it, I don't know if the attorney, is that, give us the teeth though if something happens? In other words, I, I think one of the questions was if we were gonna go back and enforce a penalty or something on them if they did this without, without the requirements. If they wasn't in the permit, I could see us revoking their permit. But do we have the teeth to go back and advise a penalty? I don't know.
Yeah, can I, can I explain why I bring this up? Because when this happened to me, they did not break the line for me and my neighbor on the city side. They broke it on my side, which means I am now responsible to fix that. Well, actually they technically should be, but since they up and left, I am now responsible to fix that. And do you know how hard it is to call a plumber at eight o'clock at night? Was not happy about it. So this is just me, like luckily I have a voice and I can come and complain and try to make a change. But I can only imagine there were other people going through the same exact situation. And with a growing town like the city of Kyle, we need something that's gonna-
Yeah, maybe like a hundred people in the last couple of months.
Well, I looked, it was four gas, gases line breaks in the last, since September.
No, there, there's been tons and tons of damage with these lines going in. I do agree with you. On the, on the public side and on the residential or like in, interior, and you can't always tell, so. Anything that gives more teeth to, to those guys, I'm, 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 I'm for it, so.
Yeah, Mr. Hendricks may have the solution. I just didn't know if that had the penalties or not. So that may be something that y'all want or not.
We can look into it and initiate an ordinance, we'll bring one back. Um, we also may, need to make sure that, you know, we're currently invoicing them for damages and losses. Make sure they're paying for the things that they break. And if we do an ordinance, we'll have to make sure that's included as well.
So to make it quick, do you wanna make a motion to direct staff to bring back as they've discussed? Because this is something for them to bring back as opposed to the council onboarding thing.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to bring back an ordinance discussing the items that we previously see. Do you want me to be, uh, exact? Or do you understand what, what the expectation is?
I just wanted, it, did you want the permit to go with the permit first and then look at an ordinance?
Well, y'all need to discuss. Legal needs to look at it. So there needs to be a, a meeting and a discussion, whatever you think gives us the most teeth.
Okay.
So I wouldn't say ordinance necessarily, I would just say whatever staff-
Okay, bring back research, I guess, and information.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna second that, sorry. So, so the, the motion is to bring back, uh, a solution to this problem essentially for a vote at the next meeting. Is there, is that clear?
To include an ordinance.
All right, Councilmember Zuniga.
So just two questions, Mr. Harper.
Yes, sir.
So, um, why are they not, um, following the eight one one dig before you, before you trench? You call the number, you have to wait, they go and mark. And then number two, um, on the permit, um, why don't we have a deposit, a bond deposit from, from these utility companies? So if they damage something, we have that deposit. Cause when I did a development, I had to leave a surety deposit. And now you don't get that until, until it's done. Yeah, then you get it returned. So if they damaged, you get it out of the deposit.
Can we add that?
And that may be something we can look into.
That way you don't have to be supervising who's doing what. And now they'll lose their deposit. I can be a little more careful.
We, we can look at that as well. We have to reconcile that with state law. Cause the telecom companies are highly regulated by, by state law and supersedes local ordinance.
Okay, those are just my two questions.
So it tells me this is gonna keep happening. It's sort of like, once it started happening in some of these subdivisions, more and more are gonna come in. So I would love for us to not feel like we're, cause I have felt like we've had no power.
But they, but they would get their deposit back, so they, it would be more of an incentive not to do bad work.
A deposit or the ability to revoke a permit, the ability to issue a fine, all of that stuff.
Councilmember Floris.
So when we were having a big, just suddenly multiples a day, we issued stop work, a stop work order on all of them for a week and brought them into a meeting. We had a follow-up meeting two weeks later and we did see a significant reduction in occurrences. And I don't know if it's starting to pick back up again, but we'll bring back something with some teeth in it, as much teeth as we can to satisfy our attraction.
No, I appreciate that. And if we could do, I mean, I, I like the idea of staff going out there and just laying eyes on it. And if we wanna add a bond to that too, that's fine. Um, but I just feel like this city, as much as we wanted this, these new lines has kind of been taken advantage of. I got a big old pile of dirt, uh, which I appreciate, you know, at least having dirt. But I have it there and now people walk into it and bring it to my house. So if they could just come clean my house, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Um, Councilmember Zuniga, you, you said about your first question on the eight one one. Typically they do call the eight one one, they get the locates and then they contact us to do the locates as well. Um, some issues that we have faced, when we go out and locate a water line or a wastewater line or a storm drain line on our end, um, the only- line, or a storm drain line on our end, the only way to 100% positively identify that line in many cases is if you have tracer wire. Tracer wire has only been implemented in, in recent, recent years for us. So you have so many lines that have been in neighborhoods for years and years and years, well before I was here, and so those lines, our staff has to do the best they can to locate those, to locate those particular lines, going from valve to valve and looking at, okay, this line's going from here to here. But occasion, you may have a service that comes across the road or something, you know, the main line's on this side, it's an eight inch, a two inch is going across the road, and then it splits to go to two homes at two meters at the property line. The problem with that is, back in the day, they may have run this at an angle, and it doesn't go exactly from point A to point B, it's over here and then to point B, and so our guys, we don't have the technology to, to say that that line's over there. So these guys do the best they can to mark that, and we've had lines that are two, literally two feet away, and the boring company went ahead and bored, and, and caught our line, he said, well, you know, it's off the mark, it's two foot off the mark. I said, sir, and I've had many discussions with him, I said, you know, we've, we've all been around this and doing this a long time, if this, if this is two foot near where, you shouldn't even come up here, you should've come off, you should've come up way over here. He agrees, but he still got me technically, because the mark was off. So that's something that I want to try to fix with whatever wording we do as well, that we can go back and say, no, you have to pothole this to a certain distance.
The other issue with locates is we only have so much time, and 811, people only have so much time to, to do the locates before the company comes out, and sometimes the telecom companies are moving so fast that the locates can't get out there fast enough. That's something we'll try to address as well.
They might have to slow down just a bit, if we can create the right policy. Any further discussion on the motion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. All right, next up, agenda item twenty, considering possible action to direct staff to provide for a draft ordinance?
I think we skipped nineteen?
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry. I marked the wrong thing. Discussion of possible action to update procedure for reporting a pothole on city-maintained streets, including but not limited to outreach notifications, improving website, estimated repair date, reporting methods by residents. Mr. Zuniga.
Yeah, so the, the only purpose of this one was, I did see a large pothole over on Sunnyside and Waterleaf, and I did report the pothole, there was a new, a person that just moved into the neighborhood, so they said, had been there a long time. So I reported the pothole to get it fixed, fixed within 24 hours. So I think y'all did a really great job of that, and it was really satisfying to see that pothole fixed. But I also looked at other cities and saw the site, the click stuff where you-
See click fix, yes, sir.
Click fix, and I was wondering, to give you guys a good round of applause for like the performance that you, that y'all do, would it be a good idea to start monitoring data on like how many potholes we fix per year?
We, we do that right now, sir. The way it works right now, any pothole that's called in, that's something that's kind of on a priority list for us to go out and look at immediately. Just so you know, I pulled up some numbers from Scott Egbert, my street division manager, in 2020, the average pothole repairs per month was 116 per month. 2021, we averaged 95 per month, 2022, 70 per month. So if you look at how that's trending, that's actually trending good, saying that we're repairing our streets, so that's a, that's a, that's a better number. And those will go up and down, they fluctuate depending on the weather. If it's rained, typically you're gonna get more potholes during a rainy time, or after a rain.
So how would a resident know that we're doing a very good job of fixing these pothole repairs? And that our city's doing a really good job fixing our potholes?
I mean, that, that, I mean, we could provide something like that, we have MBOs that we can provide, I, I think they'd be more inclined, I think your first deal was how do we let them know that they can report?
Yeah.
And that's us getting out there saying, here, we have these things available. See click fix is something that back when Mr. Earp was here, they, they, they did like a pilot, see click fix, and then with the new Cartograph, as well as that other system, that Marco will have to remind me what it is, we were looking to see if that's gonna have that capability when we bring that on here soon.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Flores, Kayle.
Thank you. In the event we ever decide to do a see click fix, my ask would be that we find a way to prioritize in order not to stress out staff and their already busy lives. And so I don't know how that can be done or what that looks like, but just to be sure that, you know, there's a crack in the sidewalk, and I get that it's important, it's important to the residents, it's important to us, but we're so, we have so many things that we have to work on as a city, that we need to let them know that that's always gonna take a priority, that, you know, as, as, thank you for letting us know, by the way, you're 420th in line, so, not like that, but you know, just something that's being realistic. I don't want, I, you know, the potholes legitimate, like we want to make sure people's cars and safeties are not at risk. I do, we just gotta make sure we find a good balance for that, right? We want to help the residents, but we also don't want to set an unrealistic expectation for them with their concerns. So if we do ever decide to proceed with that, that's something that I think we want to keep in mind.
Yes, ma'am, two things that you mentioned, one is the potholes versus base failure. So many people, they think that there's a pothole out in the road, it's not actually a pothole, it's a base failure. A base failure is a depression in the ground that makes kind of an indention or hole there, but it's not an actual breaking of the surface to let the deteriorated underneath show, could be water or whatnot in there. An actual pothole, that's something that a car goes into, tire drops, possible damage or whatnot, you know, that, that's a pothole. But we have base failures on some of these streets, and the problem with base failures is usually those base failures are over a certain footage, and it's a long, long area, and so you're talking about reconstruction that you're gonna have to do for that entire area. We did many of those kind of temporary fixes on Stagecoach, and then that's a future bond project, so that entire thing will be done later. I just wanted to kind of let y'all know on that. And then, your other one, you're exactly right, with the see click fix. I guess from my, my position, I worry, because on the see click fix, somebody takes a picture, and they have something that they want to give to you, and it's very important to them, and we understand that. But if you rate it on a priority level scale, this indention here versus this other deal that they have over here, may be on a higher priority level right now. So if this person does that see click fix, and they don't see it get done immediately, I just worry that they would feel like we're not doing our part, or we're not addressing it, or we're ignoring it, and it's not that, they're doing a hundred other things over here. But if that thing that they report is on a priority level, then that can get shifted and moved to it immediately. But I think we need some kind of disclaimer maybe on that wording, that would say that we appreciate you entering this, we will evaluate, you know, your, your, your work order, your see click fix, and assess it at a priority level. Something of that nature, I don't know.
Councilmember Flores, Kayle.
Is that, is this something that we can add to the Vision Workshop to discuss? Or is this something you want to try to make a motion for now?
No, I mean, I think we can add it to the Vision Workshop.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, I think that's something that's long overdue as a work order for our, for our departments, because it's a lot easier, I know for a while, up until last year at least, there was Excel sheets, and I feel like we have outgrown that, and as a city, you guys, especially as a director, you need some really solid software that will help guide you and your men to make sure that you're, got things in order.
Well, we're hoping that's that Cartograph that we're gonna get here pretty quick, so.
All right, thank you.
Not just sidewalks, I'm sorry, not just potholes, sidewalks are another issue people call in, and I know y'all have a long list that y'all keep there, and you're right, it's on a spreadsheet, so. And then I think we had something that we put on the website-
We did.
Allowed for people to go and see where they stood on that list, that may still be there.
Yes, sir, and the Ascot, cause I don't know particular on that one, but yes, sir, we did.
But yeah, that's all, all helpful. All right, next up is agenda item number twenty, considering possible action to direct staff to provide for a draft ordinance on low-flying aircraft over the city and neighborhoods to provide notice and proof of insurance, necessary pilot training and licenses, et cetera. Councilmember Zuniga.
So, hi, this one is just brought up mostly to understand how our policy works, how our policy works with developments that need to utilize a small helicopter for these HVAC roof installs, because I think last Saturday, there was a helicopter over a Costco, but I had the wrong impression, I thought that there was a helicopter flying over neighborhoods. And then I was like, oh my gosh, well, residents don't have aviation crash insurance. So then I looked at, well, what do other cities have? And they have these little ordinances that restrict, like permitted use of a helicopter, give some notification, make sure that the person is insured, that's a big deal for me. Because just in case something were to happen, who's gonna be liable for damages to poles, to the street, to buildings, to a person's house? There are not that many crashes that happen, but, and, but this is also, some ordinances go a little tougher into people throwing things out of a helicopter, like pamphlets and stuff, or banners, or just at what time of the day they're flying over, how many flyovers, where are they landing? So, just, I just wanted to get more, a better understanding of what type of notifications do we get? Because do we need to know ahead of time to possibly have an ambulance or a fire truck on standby? Or what's gonna be the duration of the need for the helicopter lift? Is anyone from staff that could answer?
Almost feels like a Paige question. Sorry Paige, but, like, I mean, there's, there are federal aviation laws, but at the same time, are we required to be noticed when, cause it's happened twice.
Right.
So Costco, and then before that was the Majestic Industrial Park, when they put in the Amazon fulfillment center.
Right.
They, they did a helicopter there as well.
So, we, I kind of, I've read some reports that sometimes they're done for publicity, and not really for need, for the need. I can see how big the, the buildings are, we definitely, that's more economical to use a chopper, but there has been more of a growing nuisance. But I'm not trying to be anti the use of it.
I'm not aware of any requirement that a notice be given? I've not heard of that. I've not heard of a notice being given to a city when there's a flyover occurring, so I'm making an assumption, cause I have not had an opportunity to look into that issue. So that's the best of my, that's the best answer I can give without looking into it further.
Right. I mean, there are exceptions, emergencies, police and medical, so, but this is more of a industry use helicopter, so when it's an emergency, obviously you can't give a notice. But I have seen ordinances from other cities, which I can share with you-
Yes.
On munich code, that do have these little kind of parameters on the use.
That would be the place to start, cause to the mayor's point, there, you know, there would be some federal laws governing airspace and use of airspace, and if other cities have kind of carved out where they can regulate, that's the first place to look for examples of what the city could possibly do if it wanted to enact something.
All right, Councilmember Heiser. Then Parsley, then Kayle. No, Heiser was first.
Uh, no, I wasn't.
No, go first, go. Councilmember Parsley, sorry.
And I'm co-sponsor, I co-sponsor this.
It's hard, I'm just getting back. I saw him doing this.
So I'm gonna have to make a motion about us getting microphones that have one, two, three, four, five, so you know the order of who's breaking. Anyway, isn't that, like, that's why we have the FAA, right? They are the ones who are going to be regulating what is the minimum safe altitude for aircrafts to fly, whether it's a helicopter, or it's a chopper, or it's an aircraft? So I don't know why we would need to create an ordinance to get notification when a business is going to come up flying aircraft at a low, I mean, how often do we get complaints about that?
I don't know, Vinnie.
And then, I, I just don't understand in here when it says, provide notice, proof of insurance, pilot training and license. I don't think somebody that does not have a license will be flying a helicopter. And that wouldn't be the job of this city, to know if a helicopter is flying without a license. I, I don't know, that doesn't make sense to me.
Well, the training hours are more loose for helicopters than commercial aviation.
But how are we gonna regulate that?
Right, I don't, I don't know.
We don't know who's flying the helicopter.
I don't know what the FAA is doing, but yes, there are limits of thousand feet, 500 feet flying altitudes. My, my concern was only that it really seemed like it caught everybody off guard. Now, I, I was told that sometimes building inspectors knew from the project manager when an occurrence like that would happen, and they were given some notice, but I don't think we had notice, so.
So, we did reach out to the Costco GC, and we did, we were, the city was informed of Costco flying in their, their HVAC system. I just wasn't aware, I was acting interim city manager at the time, so I apologize that I, I didn't have enough information to pass that on to you. Certainly in the future, I will make you, we will make you well aware that a helicopter will be flying into Kyle and making a delivery, but, but the city was informed about that, even though they did not have to inform the city. We do not have an ordinance that requires a notification.
Right, so it doesn't have to be an ordinance, I was just thinking like a permit application checklist, like would you need air, helicopter, you know, rooftop? I mean, is that expected, reasonable expectation for very Amazon-type buildings?
I, we could require it, we could, we could make that, you know, something that they would have to go through, and I believe that they would all comply with that. I, I have no doubt that they wouldn't tell us when they're landing a helicopter in, in the city. We do know of a few helicopter pad landing sites, because we permitted them through the site development process, and then also through the, the building process. We also have a special helicopter landing zone that I think was made specially for the scene hospital, so those are some other areas of the city's regulations, or the city's zoning and building code where we regulate helicopters, but that is something we could require. It might be hard to enforce if there's a helicopter that comes in and perhaps we don't catch that, I'm not sure, other than giving chief his own helicopter to go fly around and-
They want one.
Be ready, next budget, I, I'm thinking a helicopter is on his list. So it might be a little tricky to enforce, but it's something we could consider adding.
Councilmember Heiser.
So, you're saying it is possible to add it to permitting process, that the city would be given, say, 48 hours' notice, that if, if there were, the builder or whomever would need to use a helicopter for that project?
We could put it in the permitting process, I'm trying to think how we would, I guess, I guess what we could do is do some sort of enforcement with their permits, maybe a stop work order, which would, they would not like very well. I'm trying to think where we could, what's the enforcement side of that? You know, what's, what's the stick? If they don't tell us, and they land a helicopter, and they bring in their HVAC system, what's the stick for us? And that's something we could, we could kind of flesh out, and I could, we could talk with the city attorney and see what, is, what's the, what's the concern that we're trying to solve here? Is it that we didn't know, or that the council didn't know that there was a helicopter coming into Kyle? That might be something we could rectify without an ordinance change? Or is it that we're concerned possibly that somebody might be flying- might be flying a helicopter without the proper licensure and and insurance?
No, I think it, and for me, my feeling is only the notification.
Notification.
Just the us being aware of it, that they will be using one. So if residents start asking and questions about, hey, what's going on over there? Or like, I got the wrong impression. I thought something was flying over a neighborhood. And and I was just like, oh, my God, you know, what's it doing there?
What's happening?
Right.
Absolutely. I think we could definitely put that into the permitting process. That would be an easy place to to put that in. And it seems like the most logical, right?
Right.
The couple of times that it's happened, it's been as a result of construction. So that would be a logical place to put that.
It doesn't have to have an enforcement. I, it just, they're something that gives us the opportunity to be notified.
All right. So Councilor Heiser still has the floor. Is there anything else you want to add?
Can I call a motion that asks city staff to come back to us with options for how this could be enforced via the permitting process? And when I say this, I mean, being made aware of usage of aircraft, I guess.
All right. So motions made by Councilor Zuniga, seconded, I'm sorry, by Councilor Heiser, seconded by Councilor Flores-Kale that we direct staff to bring back a policy, an ordinance? A permit requirement notice?
Yeah, notice. I mean, it's not, it is reasonable to want to know in advance when they, when it is highly populated areas, like.
Maybe it is, but we do have helicopters flying in and out of our jurisdiction, highly regulated by the FFA, constantly helicopters flying in and out of Seaton. It's only happened twice where it's been the HVAC situation.
It's, it's just abnormal for people to see the helicopter hovering over Costco.
Right. But does that mean that the city needs to take drastic action? I was there. I got photos too. I went and saw, and people were like losing their mind. They were so excited to see the helicopter. I don't, what action do we need to take to, there's, nothing was wrong. That helicopter was regulated.
And the city was notified. It's just, Amber Lewis was not aware of the notification that came to the city.
Right. But we're talking about putting something in writing.
Correct. So I think internally, we could do a better job of notifying each other and then making sure the council's aware. We could definitely do better at that.
Communication, that's it.
Yes.
Well, I agree with the the feedback of we would have liked to have been notified. But in terms of trying to take, change some policy that anytime aircraft or helicopter is in our jurisdiction, that we're notified, I think that we're out of our bounds. Because like I said, there are helicopters coming in and out of our jurisdiction, up and down I-35, constantly through our city limits. There's no policy we can create to address that. It's not our jurisdiction.
That's out of our control, but it was just the communication. Because I'm sure there are other residents that would have loved to go out there and look at the work being done.
At the very least, y'all should have, y'all should have known. And we can do better with that.
Oh, I'll call a motion to withdraw my motion.
I think it's a great motion. I'm going to tell you this, as a co-sponsor that's speaking last, I would like to see the pictures. I'd like to put the pictures up there for everybody, please. Because it's one thing to say, hey, this only happened once or twice, and it's another to look at it and realize how close it was to cars, how close it was to people, how close it was to Evo, and nobody, I'm sure it could be communication, but how about if in the permitting process, we make it a requirement that they notify the city that they're going to be there? I think it's important that we just don't have helicopters hovering over an area, which has a lot of dirt on it. And I'm sure it's flying everywhere, which at that point, what if it hits a rock and a rock hits someone's car? And it just isn't logical to have helicopters, random helicopters, coming in and hovering over our city. And I'm not saying don't do it. I'm saying the least we can do is have a process for it. Otherwise, it doesn't make any sense to, we're a growing city. It's only going to get worse. Do we think this is going to get better? Here goes.
Yes, ma'am, and it wouldn't have felt, it wouldn't have felt so random if y'all had known, right?
Well, yeah, and we had residents asking us and we don't know.
And you didn't have answers.
Yes. And but here's the deal, if there's no process for these vendors to follow, it's pick and choosing who's allowed to do it and picking and choosing who has to tell us. And I don't think that's fair. I think the one thing that we can offer residents, vendors, ourselves, is consistency and structure. Give them some structure. It's not, this is not a punishment. This is being an adult. And at the end of the day, adults have expectations. And it's not a bad thing to expect if a helicopter is going to be bringing a, I mean, he had to go over 35, right? And he just, I don't know where they picked this up. I don't know how it worked. But what I do know is they're carrying an HVAC system that could have landed on somebody, right?
Again, again, the city was made aware. It's just that Amber wasn't made aware and Amber did not communicate to the council that the city was made aware. So I think internally, we have some communication that we need to clean up that, and then push out to y'all.
And I get that.
Costco has been amazing. And so they came, they told us exactly what they were going to do. They gave us, I think, more than 48 hours' notice. They, they gave us maybe even proof of, proof of their licensure and all the, all the, all the things that y'all would have wanted to have seen. It's just, we did not give that back to you.
And it wasn't required, and they still did it. So my point is being, these guys are willing to do it, so why don't we just kind of say, hey, this is going to be part of the process? And you guys do it. That way, it's a part of the process. And that way, if a bigger store comes in or Topgolf comes in and they don't have to do it, it's just inconsistent. Either we want them to or we don't. And you know what? I'm okay if we don't. Let's take a vote, say no, and move on. But I was trying to be thoughtful to our residents and to ourselves and to our city and be respectful. And the least we can do for the vendors is let them know our expectations. No, if you're going to come over here, you need to fill out this information and, you know, ask for a permit. And that way, we all know. It's not a punishment.
Councilor Tobias, Mayor Proton.
Amber, I forgive you.
Thank you. Thank you. I apologize.
I understand. I forgive you. I didn't get messages about a helicopter. I do have them fly over my house a lot because of Starflight, because as they come down with the altitude, I live near the hospital. That's just something that that happens. When you guys were bringing this forward, my questions were going to be, how is this going to affect the pie in the sky balloons? Are we going to limit them as well on that end? Of course, how are we going to regulate an ordinance when Starflight is coming down low? Are we going to notify the hospital right off the bat? Don't do that again. Don't ever fly that low again. Okay? Is that what we're getting at? And also, when we have our Veterans Day, if we ever have flyovers again, is that going to be a concern that we need to put a bulletin out to the residents that a airplane is going to be flying over the city to be aware? Is, I was just, if that's the direction we're going. But I think this all comes down to that we as city council members did not individually get notified that a helicopter was flying over Costco. And it rose some concerns, not to dismiss Mr. Zuniga and his concerns and Ms. Flores-Kale, if their concerns about a helicopter flying over. But also, I could see from mayor's point where there's people that were excited to actually see something like that. So I think it's, it was number one, a communication on that end, that these copters were flying low. And then it got concerned to where, let's take it up a level to where if it crashes, who's responsible? And we need to know if an airplane is flying over, they need to be licensed and they need to be fully insured. I guess that's what I was getting at here. But and so, so that's just my two cents on that. But I just don't think an ordinance to regulate Starflight to fly low as they're coming into the hospital, because they will, sometimes they do fly a little low as they, descending, how that would be really enforced and how it would look on that end.
I'm sorry, I have a floor.
Does anybody else want to speak? Councilor.
So I just see this as like a learning opportunity for everyone. I did research Costco's use of the helicopters. They actually have a training program where they have to go through, they tell the pilot what's going to happen, what, what, where they're going to land, where they're going to take off. So they actually have a good record of doing this. But I think just for us, it was a learning, learning experience.
Agreed.
I appreciate that, and I feel it's a learning experience for staff as well. We are learning expectations of council and what you would like to know from staff. And we are happy to pass that information on to you.
Any further discussion? All right. Next up, it's a fun one. Item 21, discussion of possible action regarding the purchase planning installment of splash pad at Steeplechase Park. Councilor Zuniga.
Well, now I'm nervous to ask for even $10 up here, but.
Well, it was discussed at the last meeting that we would, it might be a funding source.
So going into the new year, I thought maybe we should get a good, well, get a nice project going for the residents, a commitment to everyone in the city to really think about some of the improvements that are going to happen at Steeplechase and see how we could merge and incorporate what we're already going to do and possibly go a little further with improving some of the driveways and taking the model, the model that we're going to look at at Greg Clark in terms of a splash pad and maybe getting a smaller version of that at Steeplechase so that this is something that would really enhance the Kyle Lake, Lake Park down there and also benefit everyone in the community because it would be something for the kids. It'd be a commitment to residents. We would have more people coming outside, enjoying the park area and hopefully staying in Kyle longer and keeping some of their, their dollars spent in the community. I looked at what are some of the ways other communities have benefited from these splash pads? It's just a lot of activity that happens around there. Revenues go up over the long, long term. And also, it kind of encourages more businesses to come around too. So I think that this is, if it's, if, also, how was it funded? And other cities that are smaller than Kyle have actually taken donations. They've created like donation pages from businesses that want to be a part of the process. And they've even raised money from residents by allowing them an opportunity to participate in like the purchase of a brick with your name on it or the purchase of a picket if it's going to be a fence. So it's something that includes the entire community. So if, and I thought it was important to discuss a fun activity project at Steeplechase because it seems like that would be the good park to go do it at because it's open, very public and closer to many neighborhoods and schools. So I just wanted to hear what other council members might think about that. Do we have a question for Perez? Would there be money still in our general fund? Would there be any options to move things around? Where are we in terms of any balance of if we needed, say, a smaller scale version of a splash pad? For, I'm, I just, if I took half the, the cost of the one at Greg Clark, 250, 250,000, I mean, would that make it work with the improvements that are already allocated for Steeplechase? And it might even, Mariana might have some ideas about that. So I just wanted to bring that up to the council, see if, if we could get ahead of the budget season as well. If we started to think about this, since we're already bringing in an installer of a splash pad, maybe we could leverage what we learned from there and take this as an opportunity for the, hit the ground running to really create something that would add value to the, to our entire community and and really satisfy many, many of our taxpayers. I did speak to some residents out there and they, they also said that they would like to see something like that happen.
Discussion on the proposal. Councilor Brett Shaw.
He actually asked and answered most of my questions because it, it comes down to money. And I actually feel the opposite. If we, if we don't have the extra funds laying around right now, I would almost prefer if we wait until budget workshop so that we can just add it in as we go through line items.
Well, my thoughts on the budgeting proposal are the, you know, when we went through our budgeting process, we allocated 500,000 out of the park development fund for a generic, just a general park improvement on the east side. So it's already designated for the east side. It's 500 grand. I think maybe, maybe some of the fuel behind that is, is expired. And so that, those would be monies that would be available for reappropriation with, in potentially getting them deployed this year. I don't think there's any chance that those funds get deployed. So the current splash pad is 500,000, which the amount that Mariana requested. That's half from the city and half from the county, which would be, which means that we're only putting 250,000 in. But technically, we're putting in a million for Greg Clark Park because that was voter approved from the bond funds. It's just that escape park is also a part of that, as well as irrigation and other things. So at a, at a minimum, I think parking, parking the money from that park development agenda or CIP number 48 to a Steeplechase park upgrade gets us, gets that money more primed for expenditure. We can't spend it right now anyway, but we can start that process by reallocating them, that 500 grand. And for me, I'd say the whole 500 because I don't think, I think if you, if you got a $500,000 splash pad that we know of, it seems fairly affordable compared to other things we're spending money on. And yes, the county wouldn't be matching, but we have the funds. So we could do a splash pad at Greg Clark Park, and it wouldn't have to be a smaller one. It'd be the same thing at Steeplechase. I would be supportive of using that, that 500,000 and starting that process.
Councilor Tobias, Mayor Proton, sorry.
Thank you. Councilman Zuniga, you're at large and, and Steeplechase is my district. So you, you got, you got a head start, which is good. You know, we are, we are a team on this end, even though it's my district. Well, I appreciate you considering Steeplechase. That makes a good point, Mayor, is that, yes, last budget season, former council member Robert Rizzo and myself, and we all came together and voted for an additional 500,000 from the general fund, fund to be used for east side projects for development, correct? That money was there. It hasn't been used. So when Mariana came and brought the proposal for the, the splash pad up to Greg Park, I know you're looking at matching what Hayes County was going to do. So of course, residents, again, were, were coming, reached out to me as well and said, of course, well, what about us? And I said, well, let me put my hat on and see what we can do with the funding. And I remember we had done that. So I guess on that end, Mayor and council, and I'm going to ask Mariana as well, if we decide to go with a, a vendor that would look at building a splash pad, could we then approach them and said, hey, we would like to consider two splash pads? What kind of a proposal could you get us for two splash pads? One at Greg Clark and one to add at Steeplechase? And then when it comes to the design, we can also stay with our preservation. We can look at designing one that has, yes, the water tower concept, and then another one with the train depot concept to where we could have both Kyle, all of Kyle represented on both sides in the sense, if you want to look at it that way. But it shows if we were to develop or go to the vendor and say, look, what kind of not so much deal or whatever concept you can give us, we actually want two of them, one on each side. What can you do? or whatever concept you can give us, we actually want two of them, one on each side, what can you do? We have the funding there from last year's budget for the 500,000. If we can get it under to where, let's say, it may only cost us 300 at Steeple, we can then use that additional funding for any kind of leverage that we need for water, okay? For any kind of um design or pumps that we might need. But we can also get a head start for the Steeplechase budgeting year, Jerry. We can actually have some money there ready as a deposit down for the improvements that we're already gonna start talking about this next year. So it's allocating and using as much of our funds as well, but having the best of both worlds on each side. And I was wanting to see how council felt about doing a proposal like that by amending that budget to use some of that funds for not only but one, but two.
So the, the, the action that I would recommend that we consider at least would be to go ahead and direct staff to bring back a budget amendment and uh for the 500,000 so that we can do exactly what you just said, get the money where it belongs. Uh, and it, it's neutral from a budgetary standpoint, so you know, that would be a relatively simple thing. And then to have staff uh look into it and bring back some thoughts and ideas now that they have a funded CIP there, that would be a motivating thing. So, but you're right, the two for, not two for one, two for two, but two for the price, two.
You're also improving the Lake Kyle part, which, which we're gonna have vendors and stuff out there this year, so.
Staff's gonna have to dig into it is my point, you know, we're from a concept. But the action we can take now is to move that 500 over. And I'm curious to hear, cause I know there'll be questions about water usage and uh other things.
Yes.
Personally, I would love to make sure that irrigation is considered.
Those were the concerns, because I know that there was a, a mention last meeting about water usages and so forth. And understanding that concept there of how it would be budgeted financially and responsibly and to where we could be able to develop some kind of irrigation system there to where we can actually conserve the water that's used there as well, if we were to go that route on both sides.
Councilor Heiser.
My question for you, Councilmember Tobias, cause this is your home district and I know I'm at large too, I'd just love to get your feedback, but it, it, I think we're all in agreement that the, there needs to be a lot of investment on the east side. Is this the best use of $500,000 for something that we could deliver to the people? And I don't know the answer, but I just, if there is, if, do you think there's any value in opening it up for discussion? To see, is that what the people want? I mean, I don't know, but I'd like to know.
The original concept was for a development of a new park in East Kyle, would be like starting from scratch. But since we already have an established neighborhood park and we've been talking with staff already about upgrades for Steeplechase as well, like I'm saying, if we can go back and we can come back to the vendor and say, this is an idea that we have full support on, it may not cost $500,000 for a splash pad on that size, depending on the concept and the space and all that. It may run us maybe 300,000, but then we have that $200,000 available for using for the park itself. If we wanted to go ahead and improve the uh clubhouse area or the restrooms that's looking at adding or paving the concrete or improving the sandlot. That 500,000 that we've already allotted for, for a park as it was, we can also maybe allocate it if we need to use it for a little bit at Lake Kyle. It's just saying that the pot of money that we had said we're going to save for the parks, we can try to use as the best, best as we can.
Councilor Parsley.
Thank you. Mariana, may I ask some questions from you? Um, so I am not sure about the whole splash pad idea. Do you have a recommendation of improvements or additional park um attractions that we could do to Greg Clark Park that does not include water, since we just discussed water issues?
You mean Steeplechase Park?
Yes, sorry.
Um, so we're doing disc golf improvements, uh redoing the volleyball courts and maybe adding two more and positioning them where the current um disc golf practice area is. Uh, replacing the playground, dog park improvements and ball field light improvements as well as signage. Those are all funded within this fiscal year.
Okay. Is there anything else that you consider that will be a better fit to Steeplechase than a splash pad?
A new playground.
We could have the Parks Board look into it.
Cause that would be my suggestion for the Parks Board to take a look into what would be the best use of those 500,000.
So the $500,000, we're currently working on a project, a possible partnership with the county on a park. So um, I mean, we're in the process of that.
Then I would think that rushing that would not be the smartest thing to do, since there is a talk with the county.
Who's, who's doing the talk? Who's the "we"?
Well, city staff, um, and the county.
Okay.
And we've met onsite twice, um, we've met with our city engineer as well as park staff onsite. We've come up with the list and right now we are in the process of presenting them the proposed budget. It would, it would take to get that park to be like a gold standard.
Well, I don't know anything about the park. I don't know where it is, what it is. We put the money in there at the request of a council member, so those lines, it's not something that's gone through the vetting process of the city.
I believe the former council member that brought it up had mentioned it at the time when they proposed the 500,000.
So it is in fruition as far as those funds for that park? So in other words, talks are actually happening for that area?
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilor Floris Kell.
Thank you. All right, so A, we live in Texas, it's hot, always hot. B, we have a water issue, so nobody really wants to spend water on that. So C, we're gonna come to you guys and try to figure out what it is that we can put on that park to make those residents happy. Because there is no swimming pool, there is no water, there's all kinds of issues that we have. We need a new parking lot. What can we do? Cause essentially that park, I even, I don't like the word gold standard because I don't like anything based on money. But I will say it's like mediocre at best. Um, and it's not because you guys have not put forth the effort, I see it. I've, I've ridden that trail in the park with, with Benito a few times. But the truth of the matter is, it's really not fun. Like I go there, the fields are kind of beat down, um, it's hot, nobody wants to be outside. And even though we have shade, it's still extremely hot out there. Um, what can we do water-wise to get some kind of relief to those residents? Um, my subdivision has zero, we don't have a playground, we don't have a playscape, we don't have, we don't have anything. So it would be, and I think Four Seasons is the same way, and Four Seasons connects, we don't have anything. So what can we do to try to get something on that side to give, cause we're in January. By March, April, it's gonna be hot and the kids are gonna need something to do.
So other than a pool and a splash pad, you want other ideas for water features?
Yeah, some may, well, I, and I know the splash pad has the capability to recycle itself, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, and so maybe we just get an amount, maybe to set up for our vision workshop, we say, we direct you guys to go and figure out what size we can have because it's not gonna be as big as Greg Clark Park, right? Because it's a smaller park.
Greg Clark Park would be about 1,500 square feet. Um, Steeplechase Park splash pad, if we had a splash pad, it would have to stay up towards the restrooms. So we'd have to move the volleyball court, um, so maybe just slightly smaller. And maybe around like 380,000 for 1,500, 1,500 square foot splash pad. That was probably on the smaller estimate.
Which is, look, you give a kid a water hose and tell him to go outside and play and they're gonna be fine. So I'm not thinking we're gonna, it doesn't need to be extravagant, right? It just needs to be something where the kids can go and hang out and, and cool down. Um, I'm weary, cause I, I understand that the water is scarce, but um, I don't know, that's, my hope is that you guys could maybe bring something back to us to help figure out what it is. Maybe you go to the Parks Board, figure out what it is um that we can do for those residents on that side because fair to be fair, that, there's nothing there for them to do as far as outside or water.
We can definitely come up with a lot of amenities that we can add to the park. But if the desire of the council is for a water feature, then we would need to really focus in that direction.
Councilor Zuniga.
Yeah, so my feeling with the splash pad is it brings the residents and the community out more to, together. And that's more, that's not that easy to do on, at a park. So, cause it's, it's, people would get congregated and meet each other and it would sh- just show a sense that we've got great neighborhoods where um families can get together, get their kids wet and then go enjoy, enjoy Lake Kyle Park as well. So it's, it's already there, so it would just, it would be just a um more beneficial to have something like that.
Well, I just wanna say regarding the 500,000, cause I really think we need to decide about the money and then beyond. For myself, I feel like this is a better parking, uh, keep using, uh, this is a better place to put that money. Uh, is in a CIP that clearly identifies that we wanna spend the monies in Steeplechase and in our existing parks. Uh, so we're not having to come up with a whole new multi-year-long park development strategy. Uh, and then with the direction of looking into a splash pad or water feature as a first option, but also having the Parks Board go through the process of now that there's a CIP that's funded, meet, discuss at length, maybe have a, you know, discuss with people, I guess residents, but mainly the Parks Board and, and the Parks Department. And then y'all can bring back a plan for how you would spend 500 grand at Steeplechase. And by the time y'all have had a chance to look at it, we'll get a little further down the road with our visioning and we might be able to put a project together. But there's a, there's a slow windy path and then there's a straight path. And the straight path is put this 500 here, go build a splash pad. We have a, we have a proposal for one at Greg Clark Park, we can use that as the template. I think the reason 500 grand is in our head is because that's what that is and that's a, that's something we can get our mind around and we know where the money is to do it. I would be totally okay with appropriating those dollars and trying to put something together uh for Steeplechase. I think that is a much higher percentage chance of coming to fruition than an undeveloped park project that we're not even really briefed on.
Yeah, a long time.
Can I make a motion? Uh, I'd like to make a motion uh to direct staff uh to amend the budget on the uh budget item, CIP item number 48, Park Development Northeast and the 500,000 allotted there. Uh, to move that or to re-categorize that as a park development Steeplechase project uh and to direct staff to work with the Parks Board to bring back a proposal uh for how best to use the $500,000 that includes but is not limited to, that must include but is not limited to a water feature such as a splash pad.
Second.
Second. All right, motion by the mayor second to back, Councilor Tobias, there's a discussion of the motion, Councilor Bradshaw.
Yes, just for council, I would like to make it a priority to add money back into the budget because Councilmember Rizzo was the one who brought that forward and he brought it forward for a very valid reason. So come budget season, I think that we should definitely still prioritize that and encourage Mariana to continue conversations about a future park and wherever the location may be.
Councilmember Parsley.
Mariana, so will this stop communication with county in regards to that park that was in the talks?
I, I don't know what the next steps will be, we'll be in communication with them and figure out the next steps.
Councilor Floris Kell.
Are you, are you in communication with them? I, I guess I don't have a good idea of how far along this is, cause I don't wanna take money away from that. But I wasn't, like, we have not been apprised of any of that. I don't even know that there was talks with the county. So you can't, we can't be expected to like make these votes based on the little information that we have.
Are we talking about the sports complex? I thought the county was gonna fund that.
Right, but we had set aside, during the budget process, a former council member had mentioned to set aside that $500,000 in case the county wasn't able to fund it.
I thought that was for a different park. We'll straighten that out.
Possibly, but yeah.
Yeah, I thought, I thought what we had budgeted for was 500,000 just for a park on the east side. I did not realize it was like.
There was no description.
Right, it was very vague and so, but I don't wanna deter the county to, to help us out if that's what they wanna do.
They can help us out with Steeplechase.
Bring a plan back.
We've had it in front of council before, but we'll refresh your memory at the next meeting about the sports complex. It's actually currently in the county, is it not? That they've asked us to rehabilitate for them, that they would pay for and that's what we're talking to them about.
Well, let's keep having that conversation. I don't think that we're gonna get that done this budget year anyway, most likely, because of where we're currently at. We're so far behind on that, so this is, this is a way we could use those budget dollars, I think, better.
Agreed.
Yeah, and if you can keep us updated, that would be great.
All right, further discussion.
And, and, and just to, to reiterate again, it is for, for improvements again to bring forth if a water feature is feasible, of course. But if there's other things that the Parks Board and that that's why we have a commission for the Parks Board to come through, to give us also other recommendations as well. And I do hear you, uh, uh, Ms. Bradshaw, about um Councilmember Rizzo bringing that forward. Uh, I, I also look at it as what we have right now that's established, that is in dire need of upgrades and, and improvements. And that's kinda where I, I kinda looked at it in that sense. What do we have now that we could be able to make the improvements? And again, when we have residents coming up and then seeing what they have, uh, that's, that's kinda where, where, where the hard is to see. And it is in central neighborhoods, there's five neighborhoods that are around there that have school-aged children, that have uh parents that are, or people that have home daycares in the area that could be best utilized. So it's just a matter of rethinking and reprioritizing on that end, so. If this passes through, thank you, council, for your support.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero, agenda item 22, we've already discussed. Uh, last item is agenda item 23, considering possible action to appoint individual council members to service representatives on the boards and commissions interview panels. Uh, this is my item, obviously, we just made a vote to establish a new old boards and commissions policy, but the policy that we created does out, uh, outline that council shall appoint the council representative. So I wrote down the, uh, the boards and commissions that I think are applicable to this. Uh, there are six of them, the Arts and Cultural Commission, Economic Development Tourism Board, Library Board, Parks and Rec, uh, P and Z, and then the Train Depot Board. Uh, and wanted to open it up, I figured there's a lot, we can, there's a short path and a long path to trying to get through all this. I'm hopeful that we're all kind of interested in different things, which might make it a little bit easier. Um, but I wanted to open it up and allow for us to just uh discuss which board we would like to serve on, if any. Councilor Parsley.
Thank you. Um, I would like to um suggest myself as to work with the Parks Department and the selection uh to be a part of the interview panel for the Parks and Recreation Board.
Okay.
May I make a motion to um?
Why, why don't, if, if it's okay, why don't we all hear what everyone's interest is and see if there's overlap? But I, so I'm, I'm gonna just take notes, Councilor, uh, Mayor Protim.
I'd like to volunteer for the Library Board.
Uh, Councilor Heiser.
I'd like to volunteer for Economic Development and Tourism Board.
All right, uh, any others? I'm, I'm, you probably know, I'm interested in P and Z, I would love to be on that.
I would like to volunteer, sorry, Daniella, also for the Parks and Rec.
Okay. Uh, any consideration, Councilor Floris Kell?
I like them all. Uh, it looks like the two that are left is gonna be Arts and Cultural Commission and then the Train Depot. Uh, I like them both, um, but since I've, I really push the Arts and Cultural, I'd like to be on that.
All right, so the, there's the Parks and Rec and then the, we haven't had anyone who's said anything about Train Depot Board. So that's a conversation between Councilmembers Zuniga and Parsley. Also, Councilor Bradshaw, you haven't said anything, so I'm not sure if you had one in particular.
Well, there's seven of us and there's six commissions and I don't feel particularly passionate about sitting on an interview panel, so I will let the six of you duke it out.
Councilor Parsley.
I have a couple of ideas that I have emailed to the Parks um Department already and that I feel very passionate about it. I have worked with my HOA doing events in the parks for five years and. for five years and I feel really strongly connected with it. So I would like to request that I be a part of that panel.
Well, I will say I'm supportive of that in part because I've seen Councilmember Parsley's commitment to the Parks Board, but also from a seniority standpoint, having been here for a while and gotten to engage there. It's going to be, this will be an annual thing. So there'll be opportunities for us to switch around. But that, that would be my, my thought as well is to allow for Councilwoman Parsley to serve on the Parks Board. But that's just my opinion. Is there further, is that?
So I've seen Kyle, I've lived in Kyle for a very long time. So my, my feeling is that I really want to see the entire community, which much better balance with recreational activities. So that's why I, I would like to be in consideration for, to, to make that happen.
And if you, if the votes didn't go your way, would you be okay on the Train Depot Board? I, I have seen you interested in the Train Depot as well.
I mean, they're, they're all very, very.
They're good.
Good.
Yes.
P and Z was my second, but you already got P and Z.
Well, I, we can take votes on all kinds of things here. So. Councilor Tobias.
The reason for the Library Board is of course the connection that my family has with education and Councilmember Bradshaw knows the history of my family and how they serve in the community with, as educators. Also their involvement last year when they, with the autism awareness and how they did a Lego competition. And of course with Mrs. Bentley's group, four of her families, they donate a lot of books to the children. So I would like to be considered for the Library Board position there for the commission's interview panel.
Well, we can leave Train Depot off and we can take, take motions just, and we can go, go down through them and then try to figure out Train Depot after the Parks and Rec Board discussion. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilor Floris Kale to the Arts and Cultural Commissions Board.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Tobias, Mayor Protim Tobias. Is there a discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilor Heiser to the Economic Development and Tourism Board. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Parsley. Is there a discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mayor Protim Tobias to the Library Board.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Parsley. Is there a discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. I would like to make a motion to appoint Councilmember Parsley to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilman Bradshaw. Is there a discussion on that motion? Councilor Floris Kale.
Because Councilmember Zuniga brought the splash pad forward and I feel like he is extremely passionate about trying to build up the outside activities throughout the city and especially on the east side, which I think needs it. And, and I want to make this clear. It's not necessarily just east and west. It's also about just one that lacks another. So if what the west side didn't have things, I would advocate for that. And so I do appreciate having an advocate for the east side because it's, it's a reality. There's not a lot of stuff to do out there. And I, I see him out and about all the time in that area and I feel like he's very passionate about it. And so because of that and because of his history with Kyle, I really do appreciate his insight on that Parks and Recreation Board.
Okay. Other discussion? I do think that there's no, there's no win here because I think you're both passionate. I think you both care a lot. For me, the, the seniority is really the deciding factor, which is my also way of saying that I think there's going to be opportunities for moving around as we move forward. So any further discussion? I'm just going to call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed.
Nay.
Nay.
All right. Motion carries five to two. All right. I'd like to make a motion to appoint the mayor to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Parsley. Is there a discussion on that motion? Councilor Floris Kale.
Now you put us in a pickle because I feel like this will be the second one that he doesn't get. And so I'm torn. Okay. I just want to say that I was torn.
I understand.
I'm torn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
All right. Motion carries six to one. Next up is Train Depot Board. We don't have a volunteer for that. Councilor Heiser will do it as well. You, you're not required to serve on it if that's not what you want.
No, I, I could see that working out. I mean, I'd like the idea of bringing a water feature looking train. And if we get a splash pad, I think that, that would be great for the Train Depot to get their recognition finally.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilmember Zuniga to the interview panel for the Train Depot Board.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Tobias. Is there a discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. I cannot believe we did that that fast. That was incredible.
Thank you, Councilmember Zuniga.
Motion to adjourn.
No, no, no. Do we have executive?
What? For what?
We need that earlier.
All right. We adjourn.
That's it, right?
Yeah, we're good.